I call this meeting of the Creighton County Board of Education to order at this time. Dr. Boyle, will you please lead us with the report?
Good morning, Chair Vice Chair Members of the Board. Ms. Frances Boomer.
Here.
Ms. Naomi Clark.
Present.
Mr. Victor Dove. Mr. Carol Ippock.
Present.
Ms. Stephanie King. Ms. Kelly Muse.
Present.
Ms. Kimberly Smith.
Present.
We have five members present, two absent, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the board's agenda?
Chairman, I have two. One is the consideration by the Board of Education of a fiscal year 2021 employee bonus. The second is a request of Ms. Clark, and that is the 2020-2021 Bangor Scholarship recipients.
Okay, so we need to make a motion for each one of them?
No, just a motion to amend as I've indicated.
We would like to add to the agenda, the request, the announcement, the discussion for the bonus for the employees, and Mrs. Clark needs to add to the Bangor Scholarship.
Some of.
Second.
And if they move in second, that we add to the amendment, the discretion for the bonus for the employees, and also Mrs. Clark's announcement, amendment for the Bangor Scholarship.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all those, and we have a voting, all those in favor that did not by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah, thank you. You're going to got the amendment, your agenda.
And Chairman, those will be items K5 and K6.
Okay, fine, thanks it. Thank you. All right. We began this morning, but just reviewing our mission statement, our vision and our mission statement. And for our vision, we envision a public education system that challenges all students as learners as the parents have to imagine and create a successful life, values educators and empower them to aspire as far innovation in every student, leads in education and community engagement, and invites all students, their families, and all members of the community to work together to support public education to the benefit of our students, our community, our nation, and our world. Our mission, together with our families and community, Creighton County schools, to educate all learners to personal, professional, and serious success through challenging and personalized instruction. For our last meeting, we did have a few battles. We always like to each our battles after y'all can help us improve. Miss Flowers. And I'm glad we got a little off task during the meeting.
Come on in.
Probably slipped on a few ground rules, so let us monitor our ground rules. And some of us seem to have a little bit side of ours, so let us monitor that. And we did have some technology concerns. At this time, I will call Vice Chairman Kimberly Smith to review the ground rules, the BNI process, and the safety procedure in the event of an emergency, for those who are here today.
Thank you, Chairman Boomer. Our ground rules for the meetings are to post and approve the agenda, listen as an ally, one person speaks at a time, respect each other, everyone participates, stay on task, start and stop on time, schedule appropriate breaks, evaluate at the end of each meeting, and if everyone can make sure your cell phones or electronic devices, anything that beeps and rings, if you could make sure they're on silent now, that would be wonderful. If we were to have, we'll go with tornadoes, if we have a tornado, we're going to split the room in half. From Mr. Silveira to the right, we would then exit this door, go into the hallway, away from the windows, and, you know, get into the tornado position, and we'll look to the left, we're going to go out this door and into the interior hallway, same thing. If we were to have a fire, we would split the room the same way. The right, to my right, would go out this door into the parking lot, to my left would go out the front door into the parking lot, the furniture store next door. If we were to have an intruder in the building and the intruder was not in the room, we would lock the doors, secure the room, alert the building, and call for help. If the intruder's in the room, we will do the same thing. We will alert those that we can, call for help for everyone that can, and we will do our best to take care of each other.
Great. And at this time, we're going to ask our Board Attorney, Mr. Brian Gavert, if he will lead us ahead.
Board Members, if you'll please pray with me. Sovereign God, you have searched us and known us. You know when we sit down and when we rise up. You are aware of every action we take, when we pause from our labors and when we get up again to tackle the day. Even with this knowledge of our innermost beings, oh God, you dain't to show us your mercy. In your ever-loving care, you continue to guide our paths. You keep us safe from harm from within and from without. Such knowledge of God is too wonderful for us to comprehend, and your mercy calls us to pause and reflect on the intimate relationship you have established with us. May we give thought to the words yet on our tongues, to the plans we organize, and the decisions we contemplate, that all that we would say or do would reflect your infinite love. Search us again and again, know our hearts, test and reveal our thoughts. If there is any wickedness in us, lead us instead to your redeeming and everlasting way. Aware of your abiding presence, we pray that nothing we do this day would give shame to you. It is in the strength of your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And at this time, we take the privilege to recognize Dr. Ella Moore Patrick, who is our Person of the Year. She's waving at us here virtually this morning. And also, Mrs. Gail Hardy, our Teacher of the Year. And they are with us this morning, and she's waving to, we're waving back, and we appreciate them attending our meeting today as always, and we appreciate all that they have done this year to assist us in with our meeting. And y'all, please remind me that when we have a discussion that I don't forget to include on end of discussion. All right? And at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Tasha Diggs for Academic Services, the District Superintendent for Academic Services to present the items for our academic services this year.
Good morning, Board Members.
Good morning.
I come before you this morning with our first item regarding an update on the Avid program, advancement via individual determination that was requested by the Board. And from my understanding, this was previously an ongoing presentation, but after the 2018-19 school year, we were not proceeding as normal with some of our Board meetings, so we were getting back on track with that. And Ashley Decamp, our District Director for Avid, is going to join me for the presentation this morning. And we also have, as you can see, several of our principals of our Avid schools have joined us in case you have questions for them. That was a request also from the Board in case you have questions for them, so I encourage you to ask them questions. So some of them may have to step away because they do have testing going on at our middle schools, and this is the last day before testing for our high schools, so I told them to join us as long as they could. So I wanted to provide an update on Avid moving forward. Stephen, we're ready. So I'm going to turn it over to Ashley Decamp to get us started.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So Avid's mission is to close the opportunity gap. That's a change in language, they used to say closing the achievement gap. But it's really important for all of us to establish that it's really an opportunity gap that we're looking at instead of an achievement gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. So we have just finished up the Avid recruitment and application process for our middle and high school students. Currently, our middle schools and our high schools work in a cohort model, meaning that the students apply and interview and live in this little family all of their years, either three years through middle school or their four years through high school. We have one Avid elementary school, which is Oaks Road Academy, and every student there, K5, is an Avid student. So they are actually really good at meeting vertically and horizontally in grade levels and scaffolding those strategies, K5. So all of their students are Avid students. The students apply, again, for the high schools, it's usually around February, they apply and interview, so that way all of the acceptance letters are out before our registration process. And middle schools just wrap that up and are sending out their letters this week. We did provide a sample high school application for you. The middle schools and the high schools have the same application, they aligned that this year. And everything was done virtually. The middle school recruitment, the three middle schools, so HJ, Grover C., and West Craven Middle, created one Craven County Schools Avid Middle School recruitment video, they worked wonderfully. And the high school is actually going to take that model next year, so New Bern High, West Craven High, and Havlock High. Each did individual videos this year, but have plans to do one video for high school Avid in Craven County Schools next year. So currently, our three high schools are New Bern High, Havlock High, and West Craven High. So three traditional high schools are Avid schools, they have all implemented at different times. And what happens in an Avid high school is you take the Avid elective, which is those intensive scaffolded skills to help our students bridge that gap between being a student with some potential to being a college or career-ready student. So New Bern High School has paired Avid elective with English I honors for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors for about three years now, I think this is the third year that they'll be doing that. And Avid Four is a standalone class in the fall, and that's across the county for those high schools, meaning that Avid meets for 90 minutes every day in senior year, just in the fall, to prepare those kids for college applications, college scholarships, and getting all that intensive work in, FAFSA, they do the, FAFSA Together, they do the residency determination, and they hold FAFSA nights for families. Havlock High School is actually having their first group of seniors next year, which is really, really exciting for them. And they are going to be pairing with English as well. And West Craven High School has their first group of seniors this year, so they had their senior celebration last Wednesday, which was really special for them, and they pair with English and Sciences. So in our middle school model, Havlock, or I'm sorry, HJ McDonald and West Craven Middle have it on the exploratory wheel. So it meets every single day on the exploratory wheel. Grover C. is implementing in the fall, they had a planning year this year, and they actually are putting it on a three-man team. So it won't be on the exploratory wheel, but it still will be given every single day.
So I want to talk also a little bit about the students that are recruited into Avid and the profile of those students. So we wanted to provide you with some demographic information for the students who are currently in the program. And I won't go through all of these, but you can see on the slide, the Avid students in blue compared to the total population, the other students in the total population of that, of the students in those seven or six schools. And we did not include Oaks Row because it would skew the data, because 100% of their students are Avid students. So this is just the high schools and the middle schools. But you can see the percentage of female students compared to male students in the Avid program compared to the total population of those six schools. Also looking at the breakdown of our Asian, Black, Hispanic, multiracial, and white students that are in the Avid program compared to the total population of those schools. So I wanted you to see that breakdown of the demographics. Also, the other populations that are, for comparison, of our AIG students. So from this, you can see that 7.8% of the students who are in the Avid elective courses are AIG. 3.2% of those students are students with disabilities, and 3.05% of those students are ELL students compared to the total population of those Avid schools. So you can see that there are some populations outside of just the students in general, as far as the demographics, if they are in the AIG program, students with disabilities, or ELL compared to the total population of those six schools. First-generation college-bound, and we had to do some additional research after we met with Cabinet regarding Avid's definition of this because it is described differently in a couple of different places on their website. So we actually made some phone calls directly to our Avid Program Manager with the National Program with Avid. So first generation is defined as neither parent having graduated from a two- or four-year college. And so you can see the percentage of first-generation students in the program this year compared to students who have had a parent, one or both parents graduate from college. So that is something that, moving forward, they started it this year, but moving forward in the application process, is making sure that that definition is included on their application, so students are all defining it the same way. That was something that, as Ashley and I talked with the site coordinators, that everyone had a slightly different definition, so we made sure that that was something that was cleared up for this year. And so once the students filled out that information, we went back and sent them additional surveys. So we had 83.6% of the students in Avid who responded to a survey we sent them recently regarding their parents, so that we all had the same definition of what first generation meant for Avid. Some other things that are key for the Avid program is rigorous course enrollment. So we did want to share this information with you for our high school students who are in the Avid program compared to everyone else who are in those three high schools that have the Avid program. So the percent of honors, a percent of Avid students who are taking honors courses is 100%. And you can see that from the slide that Ashley shared with you earlier, how the Avid courses are paired. So all those students who are in Avid will take, are taking or will take an honors course during their time. So that's where the 100% comes from, compared to 40% of the other students who are in those three high schools who are enrolled in honors courses. The same thing with advanced placement, 36% of the Avid students taking advanced placement courses compared to 10.5% of the other students in the high schools. And the same for college and career prep. College and Career Promise, which is our dual enrollment with Craven Community College, 30% compared to 23.8%. We expect the College and Career Promise percentage, particularly for the Avid students, to continue growing as they learn more about the program, and we advertise that increasingly at the high schools. The data that I'm going to share with you on the next several slides, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but we did want to share with you some data that we do have. Unfortunately, we don't have consistent data across all of the schools because they all implement it at different times. So depending on the year that they implement it, they may or may not have graduation data yet, or work keys data, or even Math I data, depending on when they started. Because, for instance, Havlock High School's first year, they started with their first group in the spring of that year instead of the fall, so they did not have a full year, their first implementation year. So this particular slide does include all three of the high schools comparing the performance of the Avid students who are grade level proficient and college and career-ready to the other students who took Avid I, who took Math I during the 2018-19 school year. And the reason it's dating that far back is because we haven't had a complete year of data since that time, because we didn't have the other half of the testing data for 2019-20, and we don't have all of our data for this school year, so we'd be able to update that information once we have this year's data, since we will have tested both semesters for this year. New Bern High School has the most data because they implement it first. So there are several slides where you can see multiple years of trend data for New Bern High School. And the Avid students are the ones that are in blue, showing their proficient performance for the three years that we did have four years of data, 2016, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19. And then on the right-hand side of the slide, the college and career-ready. And those are the students who scored levels three, no, levels four and five on their, in the course test for Math I. So we wanted you to see the comparison, particularly for New Bern High School, because they had multiple years of data compared to some of the other schools. But that is looking at the proficient scores and college and career-ready scores for Avid students compared to everyone else in the school who took Math I during those years. The same thing for West Craven High. So they had two years of data compared their Avid students to the non-Avid students in the school for Math I. And you can see the improvement in the percentage from one year to the next, not as high as what we would want it to be as far as overall proficiency and college and career-ready, but that is something we're definitely working on. The things that we don't have information on is whether or not those students had a certified teacher the entire year, if there was a substitute in the class the entire year. So those are things that technically we would put an asterisk beside as you document that, but we wanted to be sure that we had this information, so we'll know what kind of improvements we need to look toward making with our students. Very similar, Math III for New Bern High School. And I'll just leave it on this for a couple of seconds, so you can see the comparison. Again, Avid is in blue and the non-Avid students. And at New Bern High School, they refer to the other students as Avid school Y because they are moving to all of their students being exposed to the Avid strategies and not just the students who are in the Avid elective class. So that is something that you will hear in terminology, probably when Ms. Hardy and Mr. Simmons speak, if you have questions for them later when they use that terminology. But they have gotten pretty much all of their teachers in the building trained in Avid strategy, so those students are exposed across the building. So this is English II for New Bern High School. Again, they have three years of data that we could share, and you can see the improvement of those students over the years and the comparison to the students who are not in the Avid elective course. West Craven High had one year of data for this. There were some standard-setting years in the midst of all of this, so we didn't include those years. We wanted to be sure that we included data that where the students took the test under normal circumstances. And this was the last time that they had that, 2018-19. So then when we have the 2021 data, we'll be able to share, show a comparison and trend data for that, for English II for West Craven. New Bern High School for Biology, and of course, again, three years of data for them in that. And for sixth-grade math, and the reason it says sixth-grade math for 2018-19, our middle schools have not had another year where they either were not standards testing or we were actually able to take the assessment. So these students are currently eighth graders. They were sixth graders when they took this assessment, so you can see how this, how they performed at that time compared to the total population. So the 53.8% in the middle shows the percent of those students at HJ and West Craven Middle who were grade level proficient on their end-of-grade test, and then college and career-ready, levels four and five on that assessment. And then reading is the same, these students are our current eighth graders in those middle schools, but the last time they had an assessment was during the 18-19 school year. And both of our middle schools have had some changes among their Avid elective teachers over the last three years. So we're hoping that they have found some stability in the Avid elective teacher assignment moving forward, that that makes a big difference in how their students are performing and their engagement in the program. So New Bern High School has some ACT assessment data, since they have had the program for several years. And what we measure is the students who score 17 or higher. This is what the state is looking for on our accountability measure. And so you can see the, how the Avid students perform compared to the non-Avid students on the ACT over the last three years. And so we will have data, again, for this school year. Last school year, the students were not able to take the makeup assessment, so they were given opportunities to take it this fall because they had to shut down testing after March of last school year. So some of those students tested much later than they would have normally tested because of the makeup delay. But we'll have assessment, again, once this school year closes out and we get the official data for ACT. Pre-ACT and ACT averages, and you can see the scale on this slide is a little bit different. Pre-ACT up to 35 points, and then ACT up to 36 points. And you can see how the New Bern High School students performed in the 2019-20 school year on those assessments. Again, these are two separate groups of students from the pre-ACT and ACT. The pre-ACT is taken by our 10th graders, and the ACT is taken by our 11th graders. But you can see how they perform compared to the students who are not in the Avid elective course. And again, this is data that we'll continue collecting for our other two high schools now that they have students in the 11th, 11th grade taking ACT. Work Keys for New Bern High School, again, sharing three years of data, the Avid students compared to the students who are not in the Avid elective course, and these are the students who took their appropriate career and technical course, career and technical education courses that would be counted for our Work Keys assessment, who scored a silver, gold, or platinum on that assessment. And you can see how well the Avid students performed on that assessment as well. And then we'll, again, we'll have this information for our other schools as they have seniors going through the program. West Craven High School just had their first group, so once this data is completed, then we'll be able to do that. The last day for Work Keys testing for this school year is on May 28th. They gave us a large window to test the students this school year, so we'll be reporting that data later. Graduation rates for New Bern High School, and the first two columns where it just has the orange, this is prior to them having a senior class with Avid. And then you can see the first Avid graduation group in 2017-18. And all of the students who were in the Avid program graduated from high school compared to their peers. FAFSA completion, this is New Bern High School and West Craven High School. It does not include Havlock because they have not had a group of seniors yet to go through this process. So you can see the FAFSA completion for the Avid students. And New Bern High School is in blue, and West Craven High School is in orange. We do have some students who are in the Avid program who are planning to go to the military, who choose not to complete the FAFSA. So we'll probably never get to 100%. They can complete it, but we can't require them to do it. It is something that they get assistance with within the class and that the council's assisting with, but it's not something that, again, that we can make a required assignment because, I mean, they have to give their personal information. And we had, I think there were five students this year at one of our high schools that are planning to go directly to the military who chose not to do it.
So I'm here to talk a little bit about professional learning. So Creighton County Schools has made a commitment to training our teachers during the summer at our Avid Summer Institute. I know Ms. Smith had gone before, and actually, Ms. King has been with us as well in the Summer Institute. So that is typically, we're going to go to Philadelphia. So we take a team with us, but we obviously haven't been able to travel for the past few years. And Avid has made a commitment to continuing that ongoing professional learning for our teachers. So we actually, last year and this year, are participating in Avid Digital XP. So it's really three good days of virtual training, synchronous and asynchronous. So we did that last year and this year. And in 2017, the district, and 2018, actually, the district committed to district path training. So in 2017, we trained the district committed to district path training. So in 2017, we trained a whole bunch of teachers and got New Bern High School to 100% trained. And we opened it up to the other schools as well. And then the year following, we did another path training where we opened it up to all of the schools and trained very little from New Bern High because they had small turnover that year. So that's our Avid delivered professional learning. But within Creighton County Schools, we offer monthly training. So we have a site coordinator, PLC, that meets every month. We have been doing it over Zoom, but before pandemic, we did it face to face. We just had an Avid elective teacher summit. So it was a four-hour training where we took all of the existing Avid elective teachers and all of the incoming or new Avid elective teachers and put them together so they could vertically and horizontally align and also give the new teachers a little bit of context because those three days in the summer can be really intense. Um, New Bern High School has implemented WICER Wednesdays. So they actually do, they have 10 hours of professional learning delivered by, um, the district office that's Avid sanctioned to make sure that all of their teachers 100% are trained at the end of every year. And all Avid schools are invited to participate. So we have all different teachers participating in that from Oaks Road, um, Grover C, HJ, Havlock High, West Craven High, and West Craven Middle. And then we have accessed, Dr. Diggs and I, um, actually Tony Adams over at West Craven High and Jerry Simmons to Avid professional learning modules where it's 90-minute professional learning that we can pull down from Avid site, train our staff, and actually give them credit for being Avid trained. Um, so that's been ongoing. We've done a bunch of those this year virtually, which has been really fun to kind of taking what is traditionally face-to-face thing and really figuring out ways to do it over Zoom. Additional points of professional growth. I am a certified Avid staff developer. So I have access to some of those modules that, um, other people do not have access to. So that's been really helpful within our district. I'm allowed to use that. Dr. Diggs served as the Avid Key Implementer, Implementer Network for District Directors. So she went and helped district directors train to learn how to do this job and support sites. And Mr. Simmons at New Bern High School is on the Avid Beginning Principle Network. I think he has been for several years supporting new Avid principles. So we have a couple of videos. This is Tyqual Rainer. So if you'll have plenty. So we have a little classroom and there's one from West Craven Middle.
I like Avid because it's helped me in organization. It's helped me become a better student and it's helped me become better in all my core classes.
And then we have a young lady from Havlock High.
How has Avid impacted you at Havlock?
Avid has made me feel more confident in choosing a college and make me feel more organized.
So those are just some short clips. Some of them were included in the recruitment video. Some of them we said, hey, kids, when I went to Oaks Road Academy, I went to Rich Marley, said, do you have any kids that can talk to us about Avid? And this kid was like, I can, I can help you. Um, so just very cute. So these are some pictures from New Bern High School. Um, I know as seniors are getting accepted into college, there are acceptance boards at New Bern High and at West Craven High School. So it's a really exciting time for them. They take their picture, they put it up there. Um, there's an annual banquet for those seniors. And then the bottom picture is just the Avid elective classroom. Yeah, yes, sorry. Pre-pandemic. Um, because they just haven't had as many. And the next group of pictures is from, um, West Craven High School. Um, so they have Avid scholars. Those kids were on the right side, you can see during the pandemic. Recently, we just went back doing a team builder. So part of the Avid system on a campus is to really build a small, little family within the school. And so they work really hard to make sure that they incorporate some of those STEM activities that become team building activities. So those kids can get together, um, and problem solve. And our last group of pictures, in 2018, Ms. Hardy was the Avid Summer Institute National Speaker. And that was the last time we actually had a live speaker. And the picture on the bottom is we chartered a bus and had a bunch of students come up and watch her give the speech, which was a huge deal. So out of thousands of people, she was narrowed down to a very small team and then selected by Avid. We had nothing to do with it other than continuing to tell her to keep doing it. Um, so she was the national speaker at the Avid Summer Institute in Philadelphia in 2018. And we have Ms. Hardy and, um, Dr. Patrick here for any questions, if you wanted them to make any, if you wanted to come off mute and say anything about the Avid program.
Is there any way that you guys ask a specific question?
Yeah.
Ask some questions first and then, um, then, um, Ms. Wall?
Yes, ma'am. I have six questions, Madam Chair, but they aren't for the principals. They're for Dr. Diggs. Dr. Diggs, can you, it's not clear to me the difference between the opportunity gap and the achievement gap.
The achievement gap was based on the students, um, actually their performance and how they, um, the outcomes of those. And when we talk about student achievement, those student achievement gaps, how the, how the students actually performed on various assessments and in different ways. The opportunity gap is having the opportunity to have access to these various, um, programs, just the exposure that Avid brings. Um, it's, and I don't know if Ms. Decamp mentioned it earlier, but every year the students go on college recruitment visits that are designed through the, um, through the Avid program. And so when students do not have the opportunity for that exposure and the, and the access to the things that we mentioned, like the, um, FAFSA completion assistance, not that all students don't have access to that, but when it's something that's done as a part of your class, um, it gives those students an edge, basically. Um, and for some of them, not just necessarily an edge, but brings them up to a level playing field. So when you don't have that support that many students have at home, and not that we can get all students in the Avid elective and make sure that that happens, but it makes sure that they, it does make sure that they have the opportunity to have access, um, to those post-secondary options that are available, um, that they may not have necessarily had an opportunity to access before.
That being said, the glaring omission to me is that Havlock's, uh, middle schools have been excluded. What is the determination for that?
Well, and I don't know that they were excluded, um, as far as what's happened before. I wasn't here when all the schools were, were brought onboard with Avid. So that is, yeah, so that, so they're not a part of it now. But that is something that we have been discussing this school year as far as adding additional campuses. We did, um, add Grover C. As Ms. Decamp mentioned, that they'll be starting their, they did their planning year this year and they'll be adding their first group of students. And so before we add another group of students, we need to be sure that our current sites are performing and utilizing the program that way that it needs to be before we say bring on two more schools and we're not getting the results that we need due to implementation. So as far as onsite implementation and our district level support, we need to be sure that that is in place. So it's not something that we're saying won't happen for those schools. We, um, did discuss it in our cabinet meeting. I did a presentation during our superintendent's cabinet, um, this spring regarding the performance and some of the same data that you saw today. We looked at that to see how our schools were performing as well as discussing the recruitment process, which is the reason we wanted to be sure that we included that in our presentation and the information that students and parents are exposed to regarding the Avid program and getting the principals of those schools ready to lead the Avid program on their site. Because it's not just adding one more thing. It, it needs to be very integral in how you do school. Um, so that's something that we want to be sure that we're ready to support before we just put it onto another, um, onto another campus and add them to the membership of Avid. So it's not something that we are excluding , um, moving forward.
I agree with you. My, it's wonderful program. My, my question, as I push you further, is what was the determination for Grover C to be added this year as opposed to Tucker Creek or HMS? And again, let me just preface this and say, there is no schism between Havlock and New Bern. They're not mutually exclusive. But as we talk about opportunity, clearly Havlock schools need that opportunity as well, especially since you already have two of, uh, New Bern's middle schools already involved in that.
Right. Um, so for Grover C, it was, um, interest from the campus is where it started. Um, when I got here, the interest from Havlock Middle School was looking at another program, um, instead of Avid because we didn't want to put two major programs on, on a, um, campus. And so at the time, they were looking at a different program. I'm not, I'm not sure what the status of that is. I don't think we're moving forward with that. And so my last conversation with Mr. Wallen was if there would be interest in Avid. And he was very interested in that. And so that's what brought them into the discussion of it. We have had interest from Tucker Creek, um, I think for, at least throughout this school year in my discussions and Ms. Decamp's discussions with Ms. Casey at Tucker Creek, as well as interest from their parents. Because they, obviously with them being a military school, they hear about it from other places that their students are moving from because Avid is, um, an international program. So that is something that we are looking at moving forward. And I think in the very near term, they would be, have the same thing going on at all five of our middle schools.
Super presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
You have, uh, Ms. Muce?
I'm going to need Ms. Decamp to help me with my kudos to Mr. Simmons and Ms. Hardy. I actually have a thumb drive at home that I asked for a couple of months ago pertaining to AVID data at New Bern High School. And they're right. When I have been to New Bern High School, the students at New Bern High School, they don't tell you that they participate in AVID. They tell you that they go to an AVID school. Um, I have CTE teachers that have told me they're practicing AVID strategies as well in their CTE courses that, you know, were my teachers when I worked here. Um, I know that Mr. Simmons and Ms. Hardy have worked very, very hard, um, for AVID to be universal at New Bern High School. And I don't know if anyone is aware, but New Bern High School has been selected as a demonstration school. So, um, even during the pandemic, they were selected, um, as a demonstration school. So I really want to give props to Ms. Hardy and Mr. Simmons. And Ms. Decamp, can you help me?
Yeah.
Clean it up. Can you clean it up for me?
So New Bern High School is an AVID school-wide site of distinction and has been for, um, this is their year three, year four, I think. Um, they're in democaching, meaning that they are working with the AVID center and our program manager to become an AVID school, like system of learning. So other schools could come and see how AVID is working, um, on their campus. So they started that coaching pre-pandemic. Um, and New Bern High School and AVID have been going through that coaching and will continue to go through that coaching next year. So it becomes a site of teaching and learning. Um, and yeah, it's been a pretty exceptional thing to see. I think that all of the high schools and middle schools aligning their processes has been really helpful for all of the campuses, um, specifically with the application process, the recruitment process, and the master schedule building. So that's been really good to have an experience site working with, um, newer sites in our district. So yeah, it's been really exceptional. So, great.
Anyone else? Ms. Avak, did you have one?
Well, the only comments I'd make, um, several years ago, Mr. Simmons came and presented and asked that, uh, Principal Simmons, um, that we allow him to take something that he had learned in another system and worked with his students and had a lot of success with and bring it to New Bern High School. And, um, prior to that, we had had an attempt at AVID, I believe, at West Craven High School. And then we lost critical teacher. Uh, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but, uh, that program waned. And so when he came, uh, and asked for that, of course, we gave full support. And I think that, uh, you see the results of that. There's been time for it to mature. We've all been in classes and seen how the students work and how, and interacted with them. Mrs. Hardy there, uh, as a superstar for AVID, um, I, I look, like Mrs. Clark, I look forward to us being an AVID district. And I think that's what you're doing. I appreciate the way you're growing the program, uh, built on a foundation of success. Uh, it to me seems natural that, um, Grover C is an example would be, uh, a middle school outreach because of all the energy coming out of New Bern High School and those families that have multiple level students, uh, you know, start asking the same questions. But, uh, grow it out and get it everywhere. I support you 100% of it. And thank you for watching and doing with it.
And to add, to add to what Ms. Muce was saying about the career and technical education teachers, they have been, um, full participants in the trainings when Ms. Decamp mentioned earlier, the WICER Wednesdays. Um, and I know we, we neglected to spell out what WICER stood for. We, we tried to do that in most of the presentation. But it's writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading, which is what should be happening in all of our classes, not just our core classes. So the CTE teachers, PE teachers, everyone's been completely involved in the training so that they can incorporate those, um, instructional strategies in their classrooms. So it was not exclusive to just the core area teachers. But, um, they have come in and done sessions, um, during the path trainings that were full of career and technical education teachers in those sessions. So we, we wanted them to see how they could use it because usually we focus things on the core teachers and those teachers are trying to figure out where do I fit? And so we made sure that they, um, the session was designed specifically for, for them.
And I will say, I do have a CTE teacher at New Bern High School who's very anti-new anything. Um, her sentiment is this too shall pass. And if you can get buy-in from this particular instructor, then you know it's solid stuff. And she's, she's into AVID neck deep. She really, she really believes in it. So kudos.
I have a question. Anybody that has a question?
I would like Mrs. Frevel to speak to what AJ Jess is doing with regard to AVID.
Yes, ma'am. I'll be happy to do so. Um, right now, as, uh, Dr. Diggs and Ms. Decamp shared, um, we don't have all the data to, to share with you. Um, this is our second full year of implementation. We're excited about having our first class of seniors next year. Um, a couple of things that we have worked on specifically, we are trying to be much more targeted and intentional with our recruitment processes. Um, you could see when looking at our numbers. Um, and then if you were to dig into our specific school data, which we have done, um, we have some areas for improvement, some areas for growth. And as I said, um, we have worked closely with Ms. Decamp, our site coordinator and our, um, elective teachers and AVID site team to be more intentional with our recruitment. In terms of going school-wide, because as you said, uh, Mr. Simmons and his team have certainly set the example for all of us. Uh, that is something that we strive for also. Um, we have started taking some small steps towards that this year, uh, with our staff development. Um, even just during our regular faculty meetings, we are, uh, either AVID site team members or the administrative team. We are modeling AVID instructional strategies. We are doing those things with our staff. Um, and then we have built a virtual toolkit with links to those resources for teachers to go back and, um, utilize those instructional strategies in their classrooms. Because it's not just about that elective program. It's about research, high-yield instructional strategies being implemented in every corner of our building. So that's just one of the baby steps that we're taking to get there. Um, next year, we are going AVID binders and planners for all students, um, really tapping into that organizational piece and how important that is for kids, um, whether they're in the AVID elective or not. So, um, we're just real excited. We're, we're proud of the small steps that we're taking and we're excited to see, um, what's coming next.
Okay. One else?
I, I have a question. Um, when I'm looking at the, uh, the first generation and the not first generation, and in my little bit knowledge of past AVID, I would, I would hope that the first generation, uh, would increase because more than likely, um, and I was, um, my, my idea of AVID was to reach those children who have the potential of going to college, who, uh, may not necessarily take the honor classes. There may not be AIG, but they have the ability to go to college. And, and I was thinking that with the AVID program, that those kids would be targeted and, uh, put in the proper classes so that when they did graduate, that they could attend college. So I, I, that was, that's my, that was one of the reasons why I asked that we hear about the AVID program. Because what I'm hearing, and when I look at this, I see honor students. I see AIG. And look back to me, if you have more AIG at a special population. But what I, my, my thing is, those children who are polished material, who have the ability to go to college, they may never walk into an honor class. But you don't have to take honor classes to go to college. So those children who are in the middle of the road, are we doing a lot more reaching out to them? Because I thought that's what the AVID program was inspired for. Well, my personal opinion, a child that AIG- Well, my personal opinion, a child that AIG, he's going to college anyway. More than likely that that child has been hearing about college all their life. Their parents have probably. Uh, end up in that, uh, generation where they have at least a two-year degree. A four-year degree, a doctorate, uh, you know, they have something. So those children are already programmed to know, I'm going to college. It's an expectation that I'm going to college. And so my grandson would not need to be in an avid program. He, he would not need neither one of them. Because they know that our expectation is for them to go to college. I am a college graduate. His mama is a college graduate, their parents are. So they already know this, but not every child falls into that category. So, uh, my thing is, I mean, to me. I'm just saying, maybe I don't understand because I know originally. When it first started out on the Western, years ago. That was one of the things that were targeted at the West Craven Middle School. Those kids that. Followed into the category, but they may not go to college if they don't know to believe that they can go. So. I guess I want to see the first generation. I want to see that normal increase. Uh, I look for, I mean, as a compared to the, uh, second generation. I'm just saying, I hope that. The, I know you can only take so many students per year. Okay, I understand that. I want to make sure that, that, that the children that would have also benefited. As opposed to a child that was going to college anyway, and that child could have been in that slot. I don't know how to do it. But I'm thinking. That's the way that I see it that should be done.
So, so in looking at the profile of the avid student, it's a mixture of all of those things. Because a student could be AIG but not have the supports at home that are leading them toward college. That would have been me as a student in being AIG, had supported parents, but first-generation college students. So I would not have known that that was. What it would lead to. I knew I needed to get a job when I graduated at the, at the very least. But I think we need to be sure that all of the students are looked at across the board when it comes to that. So it could be an AIG student without that support at home. It could be an AIG student. Who, um, is first generation and has not had anyone talking about it. And then you have the students like you just described, AIG and their parents have advanced level degrees. So in looking at that entire profile of the student, taking all those things into consideration. Because we don't want to rule them out just because they are, they are AIG or. Um, just one other factor. So there are multiple factors that they look at and recruiting the students. But as far as targeting the students, like you mentioned, that is something. And having that consistent, um, recruitment process that Ms. Decamp mentioned earlier, that we have worked to improve on. And I, I believe we'll see that difference starting with the group next year. Because there has been some consistency laid across the district and which students are targeted. And in targeting from the middle school to those fifth graders, um, coming out of our elementary school, particularly like Oaks Road. Those students know that language going, coming out, but not all of the students coming from our elementary schools would know that language. Um, and I would encourage all of our board members, if you haven't had a chance, to visit. Avid elective, Avid classes across, um, all the levels. Because to see those students at Oaks Road with their binders and talking. Um, about what they're learning through Avid and using those strategies and then to see it at the middle school and then to see the high school students. It's amazing. Um, I observed the Oaks Road students doing a Socratic seminar where they were comparing, which was better, dogs or cats? And this is with kindergarten students. Um, so that was very advanced for them, but they were, they got into the strategies and learned what that mean, what that meant. So when they get to the middle school and high school, they've heard that language and know what's expected. So I think our recruitment processes will improve and reach those goals, like you mentioned, Ms. Boomer. So that is something that we will be monitoring moving forward. And again, going back to what Ms. Clark said, being sure that we are ready when we add on additional schools, um, to support them.
Do, do we, are we going to the colleges? There used to be a phase of it where, I know we can't go because of the pandemic. But, uh, we can, is that part of where the kids can actually go onto?
Yes, yes. There's a planned college visit, at least one college visit each year. Um, including the community colleges. They do HBCUs, private schools, public schools. Across the state. Um, and that's something that even Kramer Community College is designed with their college tours. They have an elementary one that's designed for those students to expose them. So that is designed as a part of the program. Um, and actually, we have not been able to do that since the pandemic, but. So many of the university systems have designed virtual tours that are very in-depth. And so we did share that information as soon as we received it through the counselors and the, um, site coordinators.
I think it's a wonderful program. I'm not criticizing the program. But I just want to make sure that everybody there's equity in the program. That was my whole point.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Muse.
I think that if we started, if we start the Avid strategy, strategy process in all of our schools, especially our elementary school. As well, the kids will become familiar with that, that goal. And they'll start hearing about college and readiness and being prepared. Earlier. And we all know that the earlier you get to them. The more successful they are as, as they're older. So. And then they're really prepared for it when they get to high school and they just will truck right along. So. I would like to see it. I would like to see it at our elementary school, especially at, you know, some of our type of schools, you know, where. Where it's really, really needed.
And for it to be avid schoolwide, I know Dr. Patrick, and she can speak directly to this. I think it was the summer of 2018, she, um, had her entire staff trained. Um, as they were going into the restart process so that all the students could be exposed at the exact same time, um, K5 in her building.
Okay, Mr. Doug?
No, and as you were speaking, Ms. Boomer, I was looking something up online and it said that Avid was, um, an untracking program designed to help. Underachieving students with high academic potential prepare for interest to college. So that just goes back to what you were saying. It, it would seem like it would be more underachieving students in it, so.
And there are, that, that, when you go back to that slide about the percentage of AIG students, it was only 7.8% of the students who are in Avid that are AIG. So it's not a large percent, but I understand what Ms. Boomer was saying, being sure that we are targeting students. Um, across the board. So they'll know at least about the opportunity, even if they choose not to participate or apply directly to the program.
I don't have a question. I would love to hear from Dr. Patrick and Ms. Hardy. Oh, Mr. Simmons. I can't see Mr. Simmons. Oh, there's Mr. Simmons. If ever you want to call me.
Oh, you go on. Mrs. Simmons?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Look, I think Dr. Dr. Diggs already responded because I, I raised man a couple of minutes ago and she responded with what I would have said. Mrs. Boomer, I hear you loud and clear on, on our first-generation college goers and. And that is a very strong characteristic of an Avid student, but is, it is one that we consider, but. I just want to remind everyone that if we, if we, if we make that critical mistake of only targeting those students who, who would be first-generation college goers in. Then we're, we're actually going to go the opposite way from equity. We're gonna, we're gonna close the door on a number of kids who would benefit. We, we inherit many of those AIG students that you see in that, in the, in that percentage. Are students who come to us from middle school underperforming. They were identified as AIG in elementary and their, their, um. Their, 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 no, their performance over the years with, um, with their EOG shows that. We, we haven't pushed them as, as well as we should. And that's not a knock on middle grades. But my point is there's something going on that could serve as a derailleur from that student, um, realizing their potential, which again. Um, for our avid cohort students would be, um, heading off to college or, or, um, to a university. So we, so through, um, what we, um, receive as teacher recommendations from our, our middle grades teachers along with. Um, the students' application packet and certainly, uh, we, what we gather from them in, in, um, the interview. Um, that's how we select these students, but we inherit students and I'll shut up after this. We inherit students who. Are either underperforming based on what they, what we've come to believe is their aptitude. Or in some situations, we inherit students who are overperforming. Um, meaning somehow, some way they, they, they figured it out. And I'll just say, we have some students with IEPs who are in our avid cohort. Um, but they're somehow been, they've somehow been able to figure it out over, um, the years of their latter part of elementary school into middle school. But we worry that they're going to reach a wall and, and not how to get, not, not realize how to get over it. So we, we bring those students in as well, just so we can put those structures in place. Um, and, um, because, and as Mrs. Hardy and, and, um, Ms. DeCap remind me, it's not just to get them to college. They're, they're supposed to leave us with, with a toolbox that's gonna, um, um, enable them to be successful in college. And that's where the note-taking and all that comes in. So, um, uh, again, I, I'm not ashamed at all for having some AIG students in our. Avid cohort. I believe each of those students have, have, have flourished, um, and, and, and probably done even better and are better prepared. To go off and be successful in college due to Avid. So that's all I had to add.
Uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Patrick?
Good morning. Um, I could, I could speak for days about, um, the implementation of Avid. It's been a game changer, um, on our campus and I can speak to the, the power of. Avid as a professional, but then also as a family member. Um, and so I'll speak first as a, as a professional. Again, game changer here on the, on the campus of Oaks Road. Partially with, I'll just say with the, the culture of the school. And so starting that language with our students and family. Um, that college-going mindedness. And so even with kindergarten, we've taken our kids to trips to Craven Community College where they've gone through. The campus. They've seen the different programs there. We've taken them to the campus of, um, ECU just to expose our kids. We have a, a college day. And so, you know, for us, getting our kids even as young as kindergarten. Um, not, you know, and also including our upper grades kids, but starting that conversation, getting them exposed to the language. But then also equipping them with the tools. And that's been the most powerful piece for us because we've had that. Consistency of language. So whether you're in kindergarten or fifth grade, we're talking about the same strategies. Um, we did have our full staff trained going back to 2018. So, um. That has just been extremely helpful. It also goes hand in hand with our use of continuous improvement. So those PDSA strategies, when we're talking about naming the strategies, many of them are avid strategies that we're using. So it is gone hand in hand with improving things on our campus, both culturally, but then also academically. And then as an auntie, I can speak, um, about Avid. My nephew is an avid student at West Craven High School. And I'll say for him, it was a game changer as well. Um, Jaden was, was the underperformer. Whatever, um, you would let him slide by with is what he gave you. So he was a C, B kind of student. Um, he needed the, the organization that Avid provides. He needed the push. Um, he's now an honor student. Um, he's got a 99 average in physics honors. Um, and he was bringing home Cs and Ds, um, prior to that. Um, and so it, it has pushed him in a way that he needed, but then also given him the tools. That he needed, uh, in order to be successful. What I can truly say, I feel like he is an honor student because he's enrolled in Avid.
Anyone else? Let me, I can't, Ms. Ward is here? Ms. Hardy?
I can speak on the middle school, um, and Ms. Reese is on here. She can't get her camera turned on, but, um, uh, she's actually on here also. Um, I know like from the middle school, we've been doing a lot of, um. Recruitment together. We, um, our rubric is the same so that we make sure that we're targeting. Um, students that fall into that need of what Avid is. Uh, most of our students are what we would kind of call that middle-of-the-road kid that needs, especially in middle school, that organization that is just so important. And that's where you really, I think, see some of those kids start losing, sort of like what, um, Dr. Patrick was just saying. If they can get by with the bare minimum, then they, then they'll do that. Um, we have seen the success with Avid through, we're in our fourth year. Um, I believe it's our fourth year, yes, with, um, Avid at West Craven Middle School. We've got more kids every year that apply coming into the sixth grade. Um, and it's been very successful here. We have a lot of our students that then go up to West Craven High School and apply for it up there. And, um, I believe that I'm correct that this year is the, um. Next, I mean, next year will be the first year that that graduating class that started here, um, is up there. So we're excited to see, um, where they go. But it, it's been super successful here, the Avid elect, um, the organization with it. I invite anybody to please come in and see that. Look at their notebooks. Um, a child that you would normally dump a bookbag out and it would be everywhere in middle school. Um, they're organized. They know where things are. They use their agenda. Um, they talk the strategies that are in the regular core classrooms. We've been blending it in there. We do not have full staff, um, trained. We are working towards getting that. We do, um, a lot of the Wicker Wednesdays so that they're, all of our students are benefiting from some of the strategies. And I believe either Mr. Simmons or, um, Dr. Patrick said, this blends with our CCI. They're hearing those same strategies. They're naming them, what works, what doesn't. It, I mean, it, it's been very successful here and I'm excited to see it continue.
Ms. Ward?
Good morning. Um, you know, I'd like to, to, everything that has been said. Um, uh, I was thinking to say, uh, but I'd like to add that something as powerful as Avid. Um, takes time. And it takes time because you're changing culture, you're changing perception. Um, and every year since we started, we learned more. About what Avid really was building at New Bern High School. And, and that's where, um, I, I'd like to speak to the, uh, first-generation, um, questions that were brought up. Uh, you know, we were learning as we went through what Avid. You know, all of the parts of Avid and trying to put them together to meet the needs of the avid elective students. Who were so various. Um, and through the years, um, we have, uh, you know, had, again, this is, uh. I mean, they are applying. We're not, we are recruiting. We're not placing kids in Avid. So we can't go out and, you know, say, these students need to be in Avid at New Bern High School. And, um, and so part of our, um, uh, there are no problems, only challenges and opportunities. One of our challenges was talking about college to middle school students. Who didn't really think ever that they, if college was being mentioned, that they were, we were talking to them. Mainly because they're first gen. So, um, I shouldn't say mainly, but, but often because they're first gen. So getting them to understand, um, that no, you have what it takes and, and, and getting them to apply and interview. That was a big deal. Uh, it only builds the success of Avid for middle schools. And elementary schools to start sending that message home early. Um, and to give you an example of a student who, um, probably, who I know was an AIG student before coming to, um. New Bern High School, because in her interview, when I met her, I, I went to interview her and, um. And I looked at her information or grades and all, all that her teachers had said and, um. I said, really, you know what? I mean, I think you've got a plan. I think you, you're set. Um, she, her, she was not a first-generation college student. Um, and I said, you've got a lot of support and you're doing really well. So talk to me about Avid. And she said. Well, I just moved here. I'm a, we're from a military family. Um, I've always done really well in school, but, and this was at the end of the year last year through the pandemic. She, uh, had been, um, just, well, we, we hadn't gone into the pandemic when I interviewed her. But she had just gotten to, to middle, to the eighth grade in middle school. She had just moved here. She said, my dad, my stepdad's deployed. My mom works 12-hour shifts as a nurse. I don't know anybody. I'm terrified. I don't have, I don't have any. Support. I'm going into this big high school. Um, I struggle with anxiety about unknowns and. I'm just feeling a lot, I'm feeling lost. And, and we took, we said, you know, she, we had the room and she's, she's in Avid now. And it has been a lifeline for her. Um, and I'm proud of that. Um, and she has needed those structures and the socialization. And so there are, there are more things that we look at, you know, we don't just pinpoint. We try our best to get those students, um, who we can have the most impact on. And of course. Us being schoolwide now helps us to feel better about, you know, we put in a, a, a rubric system this year. That helped us really look at our students across the board. And, um, and so we, we're always growing that. And, and I needed you to, to know that that's something we want as well. To make sure that the avid elective is varied and diverse and, um. And because all of those students bring strengths to it as well. And that the others need because they become examples for each other and leaders to one another. So, um, it takes time and it's worth it. You know, I can say. Um, I loved CCI and I'm talking about continuous classroom improvement. I was with, um, Dr. Blunt. When that was, we were really involved in that and I loved all of that and I enjoyed it and I was on fire with it. Um, and then Avid did the same thing. I, you know, at 37 years, I recognize. What I feel is good, solid teaching. Um, and it can look different for different people, but I saw that in CCI. Good processes involving student, student leadership, student agency, and then with Avid. Um, and so it's powerful. It's not anything necessarily new or unheard of. It's really strong, um, teaching and learning embedded in everyday life. It's really strong teaching and learning embedded in everyday life at school. And that is why I love it and why I'm so committed to it. And I see the changes it makes in students. And these, you have to know, these Avid elective students, over time, find their voice. And they're ambassadors in the building. Students who maybe would not have felt that confidence or felt that ownership of what's happening. I mean, Avid kids know WICAR, writing to learn, inquiry, collaboration, organization. And, and organization of your, of your time, of your materials and of your thoughts, the way you learn, questioning, metacognition. Those kids are starting to feel through this, you know, process in Avid, a real ownership of their own learning becomes lifelong. It's not just getting through a class, it's creating me and the way I learn and the way I think. And that is just so powerful to watch. I encourage you to, to, to get in those classrooms and, and let those kids tell their story.
Ms. Reese?
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I had issues getting my camera on, but yes, let me talk about the HJ. Avid, we're in our fourth year here at HJ and it has been, we've grown so much in those four years. The students here, as everyone has said, again, they are excited. The culture is something that we have worked at least the past two to three years on cultivating. Because yes, it is all about a culture, culture in the building and culture in the classrooms. And something that I'm often reminded of is going slow to go fast. And with Avid, as Ms. Hardy mentioned, it takes over time to grow and cultivate the culture of student excellence and life beyond. And while we're here in the middle school land, it is sometimes difficult to make the connection to life beyond high school. But what I love about Avid is the ability that we have to expose our students. And we have HJ over the years taking, taken a field trip to North Carolina Central University. We've taken groups of students there. We've taken students on the campus of East Carolina University. And we've also taken students here to Craven Community College. Because again, the exposure at this age is great to kind of start planting the seeds in their minds. And so, and looking into next year, we recently, as in I think last Friday, sent out the letters to our students who will be in our Avid elective program class next year. And again, it is, it's an exciting thing knowing that for these students, they are starting to really take ownership and learn how to take ownership of their learning and learning these skills so that they can be successful to, again, not only get accepted to college, and that is the key, but also being productive to make it out of college. And that is for our students and the students that I serve with five feeder schools. I do have a very diverse campus. And so it is important to our Avid elective teacher that our, that we are reflective in our Avid program of our total school demographics. And in looking at our next year's class and the, the breakdown, it, it is a very diverse group of students. We have 11 first-generation students, collegegoers in, in our group out of our 27. And so that's 41% of our makeup of this class, incoming class that, again, we're very excited and proud about. I love the fact that the middle school levels with Grover C. coming on for next year, that collaboration piece that Jessica spoke to. Because again, as, as middle school, it is a unique time developmentally in a child's life. And the decisions that they do make will help to somewhat strengthen their walk on the correct path or sometimes push them over on the other side. So I'm really glad that in, on my campus, we have a, a program that allows us to target those students who are showing the potential that we can start nurturing and supporting and, and really flooding them with the supports they need to be successful while they're here at the HJ and of course, life beyond at New Bern High School or wherever it may take them. But yeah, I, I love it. I can't praise enough in terms of just the training. I love the fact that the district has been supportive in making sure that when opportunities arise to get additional staff trained, that they have certainly directed, you know, resources to us. Even if it meant bringing things to be done at New Bern High School so that we can, again, push through teachers to get access to the additional trainings to help us as we move towards whole school-trained teachers. But yeah, I mean, everything's great here with our Avid. We've actually, something that's a surprise to our students. We're actually moving towards getting a special crest made for our kids. We want them to understand that it is a, it's something that's unique and something that's special that you should take pride in. So our students next year on their shirts will have a uniquely designed Avid crest for HJ students, just so that we can continue cultivating that, that Avid culture and the expectations and the supports that we are going to flood them with while they're in our school.
Ms. Blot?
Good morning, everyone. I, I think every, obviously everything that's been mentioned is, is phenomenal when it comes to building a culture and some of the things that kind of came to mind looking back over the years. I, I think the one piece that has been talked about but not specifically said is the relationship piece that comes with a program such as Avid. There's a safety net, there's encouragement, there's building that relationship. And I think another very key component to this obviously would be the staff that is involved in it. Obviously, Ms. Hardy, I, I'm sure there are many other superstars in the Avid programs and the, and Avid teachers, but Ms. Hardy is, is truly one of the best. And over the years, I think it comes with the personality. And I think as a culture-changing environment, our students truly need the level of, of encouragement that allows them to be risk takers. And, and I think the strategies in Avid, the scenarios that we try to do from a school-wide perspective allow students to be risk takers. Our students sometimes have the ability to, to be things that folks never dreamed that they could be or, and they could not dream to be. But without that support mechanism, I think it's important. And I know that at West Craven High, since March, some of the things that are, since I've been here would be just the excitement school-wide to get folks involved. Common language across curricular area. I, I think the common language piece is a key component. Whether you're teaching health and physical education or you're teaching a CTE course or if you're teaching an honors course. So I think that's part of that, that success rubric, so to speak. And also looking at master schedule development. Cause it take, it takes a, you gotta really look at a master schedule and create a master schedule that is student-centered and not adult-centered. And when we create master schedules at high school level that are gonna create opportunities for students, we're doing what I truly believe is, is our purpose. You know, adults, whether they have planning period first or fourth, really shouldn't push a master schedule. What, what our students' interests are and how we structure those things are important. And I think that Avid allows that from a school-wide perspective. And it's just good old common sense, down and dirty, support folks, get them to see where they didn't think they could go. So it's really from a personal standpoint and kind of selfish standpoint, looking back over the beginning, my 20 years in Craven County, then a short departure and now coming back in, in the role that I'm in. It really is exciting to see how this has evolved over time and how it has stuck and it's stuck and how it has helped many, many students across the district. So.
I would like to thank everybody for your comments about the Avid program. It looks like this is a program that we need to keep. And one of the reasons why I asked because I had, I had word that we, that it was, and it was not true. And so we just wanted to get it out that nobody is considering eliminating the Avid program. But that was in the win. And so I had even asked Dr. Doyle about it and she said, that certainly was not true, but that's what we had heard. And I would like to clear something up. I'm not criticizing the AIG students being a part of the Avid program. I'm not criticizing that. And I guess my point was missed. My point is this, I just want to make sure there is equity in, with the program. I make, I want to make sure that the program is designed to meet the, what is specified to do for those underachievers. And I just want to make sure that that is being done. That was the only, that was the whole reason. We needed to go back and re, re, to review. And it looks like at the elementary and the middle school that that is what you all are doing. And, and, and I know that the high school is going to continue to carry that on. But if there are some misunderstanding and that's what we're supposed to do. Talking about it in the community and not bringing it back to discuss it, it's not gonna do anybody any good. So I don't want to be saying that we did not want AIG students in Avid. That's not what's being said. What I am saying, that those middle of the road kids, that they're not being offered the opportunity to be in the Avid program, that we need to look closely at our guideline to make sure that those kids are included. And that's equity. And that's what I'm asking for. And at this time, do you all have any more? Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate the information. It is what we need and we did, and we appreciate all that was been said about the program. Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, we ask Ms. Michelle Lee to come and, and do her presentations.
Ms. Boomer, I have two more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know you want me to sit down.
No, 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 no. I have two.
Take your time. No, you're fine. So the next item for you is summer school. I think it was a request for additional information. I know during the organizational review, there were a few questions that came up, but I didn't want to share additional information regarding summer school and the plans for this coming summer that are still being developed to a certain degree. As you're aware, there was legislation, Special Law 2021-7 that is requiring all districts to provide in-person summer school for students in grades, grades K through 12, particularly targeting our at-risk students. And I know we've talked a lot about since the pandemic started in March of 2020 impacting our in-person instruction, that all of our students have probably experienced being at-risk in some way at some time during this time period. But we did have to make sure we targeted those students. So we have designed our program according to the legislation to meet the 150 instructional hours. And so the program will run from June 7th to July 15th for those students. And as you can see in the write-up, the program includes extended instruction in reading, math, and science. And it looks a little different based on the grade level and I'll share a little bit more about that in just a second. There's also requirements for physical activity for certain grade levels as well as enrichment opportunities. As a part of the program, because normally we have some summer programs that are done separately, like the summer remediation and then testing for that for students who are not proficient on their EOGs or EOCs. They have the opportunity to take those assessments again after some brief remediation. As well as our Read to Achieve, our RCA camp that's normally done for some of our elementary students in July. So with this summer school design, we were able to embed all of those things together. Because if we ran them separately, we would be doing 150 hours or almost six weeks of summer school and then a separate Read to Achieve camp. And then some students would not have had any summer school, summer at all. So we wanted to be sure that we did as much as we could to embed all of those. So as you can see, based on the write-up, that for the high school students, they'll be focused mainly on credit recovery, but they also have the opportunity for enrichment exposure as well as social emotional support that we have to provide for our students K-12 who are in the program. The Read to Achieve camp that's embedded in this will run from June 7th through the 24th. Those students do have the option, if they want to just attend Read to Achieve camp, they can come just for that time period. Or they can attend, attend the entire time period, which I think a lot of our students and parents are considering. Like I mentioned, credit recovery for the high school students. I mentioned this during the organizational review, but for the high school students, what was shared with us by DPI is that for high school, it's basically a drop-in design. So those students can drop in anytime during that time period to take what they need for credit recovery if they choose to. If they want to be there the entire day, they can do that and work the whole day on their credit recovery courses, enrichment exposure or receive social emotional support. Or they can just drop in for a couple of hours here and there to work through what they need for credit recovery. We encourage them to come and do as much as possible in the beginning of the program so they don't run out of time. But that is part of the design for the high school students. And then the opportunity for students to earn promotion if they were slated for being retained at the end of the school year. And so that's something that will be reassessed for those students at the end of the program. Parents who have students who are eligible have to be contacted directly by the school. So we did provide the schools with some criteria to look at at-risk students. And it's a wide, it's a long list of things they can look at. And some things are not just based on standardized test scores or something that could be objectively documented. It could be that they've noticed a student needs that socialization time with their peers on a more consistent basis and for a longer period of time since they've been able to come back into the buildings. So they have been able to start making contact with those parents and letting their students know that they are eligible and let those parents know that their students are eligible and inviting them and encouraging them to, sign them up to attend. We have staff members who have applied to work the program. And there are financial incentives through daily or hourly pay that I'll share a little bit more about with you in a second, as well as bonuses during the program. And this is, these bonuses are separate than the item that Dr. Doyle mentioned earlier that she's gonna talk more about later. The legislation also provides bonuses for students who are working, for teachers who are working with third-grade students based on how they start the program and end the program. And we'll provide you with details regarding that. On April 26th, we provided opportunities for all of our principals and assistant principals to meet with, virtually meet with our CNI leaders. Steven, I'm not sure what's happening to this room. To work with our CNI leaders to give input on what we had proposed for the design of the summer school program and to ask questions. We provided five sessions over the course of the day so they could attend when was convenient for them. And we had all, all of our schools were represented except for one as far as having someone there so they would have the opportunity to give us input. And it was very informative because some things that we may have overlooked in our design of the program, we were able to go back and add because we were focusing on the 150 instructional hours. And one of the principals asked, are we gonna have a planning day for the teachers? And that was something we didn't think about in making sure they had that one planning day before the program started. So we went back to add that, to be sure we had covered all of our bases. And since this summer school program is designed differently than how we've ever had to do it before, we knew there may be some things that we needed to go back and, and rework. So after that session, we took every, all of their feedback, made some improvements and then rolled it out to the staff and into the community for them to start being able to sign students up and for the staff to be able to start applying to work the program if they chose to. And then Ms. Wagner was very key in getting it out on all of the platforms that she uses to share information with our general public. As another part of the process, obviously is child nutrition and transportation. We've got to get the students there and back home as well as feeding them breakfast and lunch each day of the program. And so our Transportation Director, Dr. Hassel, and then Child Nutrition Director, Ms. Wain, they have all have access to the students as they enroll in real time. So they can continue updating their information as we move forward. And then as we make final decisions regarding the sites that will be used. Because if we don't have enough students enrolled from certain schools or enough staff, we, we'll end up having to combine some sites. And then that will impact transportation and child nutrition. So we'll be working directly with those directors and Mr. Lee to get all of that in place. So there are a couple of things in the upcoming planning steps and some of these are already underway that we've started in looking at the staff applications. The staff application closed on this past Friday. So myself, as well as some other members of the Curriculum and Instruction Division, began going through those applications. We started with our elementary students because that's our largest enrollment population so far to see where we were with staff applications. And the student enrollments are continuing until June 2nd. So we'll be making some adjustments as we make some initial decisions regarding which staff. At this time, as I shared with the staff members, for the, the core area teachers who have applied from the elementary schools, it looks like we'll be able to employ all of them who have applied. And then we'll be making our way through the other groups of staff members who've applied in ECP as well as our teacher assistants, nurses and things like that as we move forward. So we started sharing that information with teachers as well as school leaders yesterday, working with the elementary principals first. We did create a tentative daily schedule for the principals to give us feedback on and I'll share that with you in just a second. And it's not so much as far as the schedule regarding the exact times they have to do things, but with the components that have to be included in the program, how much time to devote to reading, math, science, what have you throughout the program. And then a couple of other next steps. We'll be having our teachers that we're hiring for the program as well as school councils and administrators. And I mentioned the school councils because there is a social emotional support aspect to this program that we have to include that can be provided by school councils as well as other staff members on campus. As well as the learning systems coaches to help us review instructional materials that we'll be providing to the staff members for the program. We also have to have a competency-based assessment that we administer for students in grades K-8 at the beginning for the pre and at the end for the post for those students. We did select STAR and received approval from the state to use STAR. STAR has been used at our elementary schools this school year. We will be providing training for our middle school teachers who have not used this program. We did have to have something in place, so we had to select a program. So whatever we. So whatever we selected, it was going to be new for our middle school um, teachers. So that, that training will be provided for them to utilize. And those assessment results, we have to report back to DPI um, by October regarding the program. And then lastly, we are in discussions with the Boys and Girls Club as well as the YMCA regarding. I'm partnering with them to provide some of the enrichment requirements that we have to um, have as a part of the summer school program. Um, and our physical activities um, in conjunction with their after-school services and the camps that they already run. Because one of the things that we have, we have to include in this program, which normally isn't in legislation. We have to have fun as a part of the program, particularly for our elementary students. Um, so that would, for the most part, possibly impact the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA summer camps where they're normally going to that. Uh, for those reasons. Um, so Stephen, if you will um, click on the summer school instructional information. Well, actually, if you click on the flyer first, that would be the best place to start. And this flyer will look very familiar um, to you. I think Dr. Doyle shared it with the board directly. And then this is the one that we have been um, sharing out with the public um, that the parents have received. So they would know more about the program. And on the left-hand side, you can see the various components that I have mentioned as a part of the program. It is required to be face-to-face. There's not a virtual summer school option.
Okay.
Um, and we'd have, we haven't received that question from some of our parents who students have been um, virtual this entire school year. But the legislation requires that it is face-to-face. Um, prioritizing the students. And then you can see the amount of time. That the program will run as well as the hours of the day that the students will be there. It is a little bit longer than a normal um, school day. But in order to include those components that we have to include. And then there are certain things that we cannot count in the one hundred and fifty instructional hours. Um, when it comes to it, like the um, the physical activity. We have to give that to them, but it's not a part of the instructional hours that we could count. So we had to have a little bit longer day than we normally would have. Um, and then as I mentioned earlier, embedding the read-to-achieve on summer remediation for testing for EOG and EOC information. Um, kindergarten students who attend the um, full program will not be retained. So if there is a kindergartner who was slated to be retained at the end of this school year. If they attend the program, they would be promoted to first grade at the completion of the program. Um, other students in grades first through twelfth, um, they would be reassessed by the principal at the end of the program. And whether or not they would be promoted. And obviously for the high school students, that promotion is based on their credits earned. They have to have earned a certain number of credits in certain courses in order to be promoted. So it's not just a matter of did they come and participate? And how well did they do? They have to have finished any credit recovery courses in order to earn the um, particular credits that, that are required. Um, the program is voluntary, but we will be providing transportation, um, lunch and breakfast each day. And then they are just able to click on the link in order to go to the application and sign their student up. It's a very basic application. On the right-hand side, the little sticky note graphics. You can see the components that are included for each of the different grade levels, which looks a little different um, depending on the grade level of the student. See if you scroll to the top. So for grades K two, you can see that it includes reading, math, physical activity. Enrichment and social emotional support. But then when they get to grades three, we also have to include science. So grades three through eight have to have science included as a part of the requirements. And then um, like I mentioned earlier, a little bit different for grades nine through twelve. Where it is mainly credit recovery um, and then enrichment elective course um, access as well as social emotional support. The elective course, it does not have to be a credit earning course. It could be exposure to enrichment opportunities. We do have some career and technical education teachers that are twelve-month. They can expose students to various aspects of their program um, without them having to sit through the entire course to earn credit. Um, it's a great recruitment tool. Ms. Holly, Ms. Holly Tolson and I have been talking about that and working with the teachers as well as um. Deciding whether or not they would spend all of the time at the high school or spend some time also at the middle schools and elementary schools. To be able to expose those students. Because if the high school student, if the high school teacher can get those middle school students interested before they get there. Then they have natural um. Built-in students coming into their program as far as those that are interested in planning to sign up. So that's the flyer that has been circulating and will continue to circulate throughout the program. And then Stephen, if you will click on the um, summer school instructional information. This is a draft of what we shared with the school leaders when we met with them um, in a recent principal meeting. Just to give them some idea of the amount of time that was, need to be devoted to different areas um, throughout the day. This is not mean that they have to have students engaged in math for an hour and forty-five consecutive minutes. Um, they can split that up over the course of the day so that it looks more like a normal day. And so the students are exhausted doing one thing for a long period of time. Reading can be embedded over the course of the day um, as well as math and anything else that has a long period of time devoted to it. Breaking that up with the physical activity enrichment. And then that also allows us to employ our PE teachers to provide those activities, work with the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA. And then the social emotional support. So that it could be designed more um, like a traditional school day and not them feeling like. I've got to devote this amount of time every morning to reading and this amount of time to math. They can split that up over the course of their day. So once we decide the sites, we'll work with those school administrators and the staff. That are working those sites to design their day to be sure that they have included everything that needs to be there. Um, and we also, we can't even count, we can't count lunch as a part of their instructional day. So that's something else that we had to remove from those instructional um, hours that we were calculating. Um, they will be maintaining attendance and then the expectations for behavior will be shared with the students and parents. All the things that we would do during a normal um, school year and school day so that everyone would know what to expect it. And because some of the students may be attending campuses that are not their norm or working with teachers and administrators that are not the ones they're accustomed to. So we want to be sure that they know what the expectations are on that campus and where things are and how to um, how to navigate um, throughout their day. So that is the plan for um, the instructional day. But like I said, this is a draft and we'll be working with the school administrators to set this up for what it looks like on their, on their campuses. And then the, the last piece that I wanted to share with you, and this is not um, linked in here. But on the information that we shared with the staff members on their application, it shared with them the bonus information. So for certified um, staff that are planning to work summer school. Um, we're offering a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar bonus if they're working the full program. Um, for classified staff, it's a one thousand dollar bonus. Um, and then for, um, we have a separate bonus structure for our independent drivers. We have some staff members who are TAs and bus drivers, and so they would fall in that one thousand dollar category. And then our independent drivers have a um, smaller bonus structure because they're not working throughout the entire day and working with students throughout the day. And then we have um, for the teachers that work with our third grade students. If they're working with students in third grade who enter the program not proficient on their third grade assessment. But they end up being proficient when we assess them at the end of the program. They can earn a um, performance bonus of a hundred and fifty dollars per student. And that's a part of the legislation um, for summer school. So there's quite a bit of money to be earned. Um, with the classified staff, their hourly, hourly um, wage will be twenty dollars an hour. And then for the certified staff, they're receiving two hundred and fifty dollars per day um, for each day that they work.
So they get the two hundred and fifty dollars per day plus the.
Plus the bonus. And then they can earn a performance bonus if they're working the third grade. Yes, just third grade.
Okay.
So we are doing everything we can to make sure that we've got the strongest teachers doing that third grade, right?
Yeah, so and we've got to go through all the applications and see who applied. Um, so that's the part that we don't have a lot of control, a lot of control over. Uh, but that is something that we're looking at. Um, because we do have some people that I think when it all plays out, we've got to look at the number of third graders who are um, enrolled in the program. And then the number of teachers who have experienced teaching third grade as well as those who have um, had success with third grade in the past.
Thank you for sharing that information. That was one of my important hours. Because I'm sure that would be a, but going back, so who determines whether or not the third, that we have the best people?
We'll, we'll be working with their principals. Um, so that was information that we sent out to the principals yesterday. Um, since the application for the staff closed on Friday. Then they um, will receive today their final list of people who have applied from their school. At some schools, we have several people who have applied, like almost more staff members than, than students in some cases as far as the ratio. And in some places, we, it's been the opposite. So once we go through and look at those teachers and what they've done, we'll be working directly with the principals. In making those assignments based on the number of students who have enrolled.
Have you, did you have a set goal for the number of students that we were looking for to enroll this?
We did not have a set goal, but I can tell you that as of eight o'clock last night. We had two thousand forty students who had enrolled in summer school. Um, and I'm sure since I haven't looked this morning, it has jumped again. Um, it usually jumps while I'm in there working on the, um, compiling the information. But um, of those two thousand forty, we've had um, and this may be off because I think the two thousand forty may have jumped while I was in each grade level. But there were over thirteen hundred elementary school students. Um, almost four hundred middle school and almost three hundred and thirty high school at the time.
Are we going to have that teaching?
And right now we do, but the application's still open. So um, but keeping in mind that we have um, the teachers who have applied. And then when it closed on Friday, we had um, almost ninety um, TAs who had applied. So we'll be utilizing those people um, in various ways to make sure that the small, the groups of students remain small when they're working with them throughout the day.
And if you say how many have already enrolled, what is the capacity?
Well, and we've, we've had some um, we've had some parents um, change their mind. Been getting some of those emails and as that has happened. So once we close out, we haven't set a maximum. We wouldn't know the maximum until the um, staff finished their applications. It looks a little different at the high school level because we've had quite a few high school teachers um, apply to work the program. Some of them are elective teachers that may not necessarily be working at the high school. For instance, I've had interest from a Spanish teacher that could provide enrichment at our elementary or middle school. If there's no one at the high school that needs recovery in Spanish. So we'd be able to ship some of those staff members um, to where we need them if they're um, interested in working. But we have had people that are interested in providing their elective um, course information to other grade levels. Particularly um, when it comes to dance, theater, things like that. So um, I think we'll, I think we'll be fine. Um, we're, we're going to figure this out. Um, the last thing we want to do is turn some students away who want to have additional academic exposure.
Yes, um, so is Ms. Tolston offering any CT teachers extended months of employment during the summer? Because the only teachers that actually teach or are on staff for twelve months are ag teachers. So is she offering any extended months of employment to any of the other?
So if they're not, if they're not already eleven or twelve months, then they would apply to this process and they would get the, the payment, the pay structure that I just described.
Okay.
So if they're not already getting paid.
Is there an attendance requirement for students?
Um, what, working backwards for high school, we can be drop-in so that they don't have to be there every day. We encourage our other students to be there as much as possible. We're going to try to, for the most part, treat this like we would a typical um, school year. And with the expectation of them being there at least ninety percent of the time. We would like for it to be every single day, but we know that, that we have families with things planned over the summer. Um, and so that's as far as maintaining the attendance. We do expect the um, administrator that's assigned to that campus as well as the teachers to continue making contact with those parents. If the students are missing more than um, quartered in average number of days.
Um, when will you let teachers know who's going to get, who's going to be accepted for their applications? I've received a phone call this morning. And they said um, the app, what, the applications for kids, it's the cutoff dates not till like what, June second?
Right, we had to make sure that we gave the high schools enough time to finish out their courses and get grades in. So a lot of the elementary, middle school students know whether or not they're at least on the retention list. Um, and but the high schools would be more time because they test right up into that last time and then they've got to wait for, wait for scores. Um, and so like I mentioned earlier, we have already reached out to um, the core elementary teachers. We did that um, this first thing this morning. So they've received an email to um, confirm their commitment to work. And then as we uh, work through each group, we'll be sending that out. Our next group will be um, middle school and then going up to high school. With some of the high school, it's a matter of working with the school counselors to find out which courses of students are needing to enroll in for recovery. Because we have to provide in-person support um, for those courses. So if we don't have any math, for instance, which is probably not going to be the case. But if we don't have any students needing math recovery, then we could utilize those teachers in another capacity. So we're working through each group. And then we'll also have to work with Ms. Harson and Ms. Gober to um, go through the number of students who check, or parents who check on their application. That they need ECP services to look at what those services are and place those teachers in the appropriate place. Because if it's an adaptive student, then we've got to be sure that we have the right teacher assigned compared to someone who needs inclusion services. So we're having to work through them step by step.
Okay, and then you said we chose STAR. STAR learning or I guess is the, the program we're going to be?
No, competency, but it's an assessment, the competency-based assessment.
And why did we go with that instead of iReady? Because if we use iReady, it's my understanding that we could be financially reimbursed.
We could be financially reimbursed, we'll be, we've already been, received the money for STAR. So yes, so they would financially reimburse us as long as we chose something that they approved. So in our summer school plan, I had to let them know which assessment and they approved STAR. So we've already received the money for that.
Okay, perfect, good.
I'm, I'm pulling in Dr. Diggs on the, the fifth grader and the eighth grader. As a parent, what are my options if the school says your child is ready to be promoted? And I'm saying, no, they aren't.
What are your options in requesting that they be retained?
Yes.
I mean, that's a conversation that they can have with the, the school principal. Um, but it is something that they want to talk through um, and look at actually all of the students. Um, criteria for that student to justify why they are looking for their student to be retained and looking long-term. I know we, for some, it may just, they're thinking about this school year and whether or not they're ready. But taking into consideration even things as far as them not, no longer being with their peer group that they've become accustomed to. And looking at the age of that student, not that we want to socially promote students. But what will this mean for that fifth grader long-term if they are a year behind their peers? And the opportunity for them to get, to get caught up if they choose to try to get back with their, with their graduation cohort for the most part. But that is a conversation that um, parent can have directly with the school principal.
But who would get them caught up academically presuming that summer school is not going to satisfy all the options or coursework that they've missed?
For which, for a fifth grader?
Both.
For a fifth grader, well, if the parent, if the school is promoting them and the parent is requesting that they be retained. My question would be, what are they behind? What, what is the parent viewing that they're behind on? If the school is viewing that they're on track and ready to be promoted. So I think those are, that's why it needs to be a case-by-case conversation as far as what the reason is for their request for retention.
And likewise, your answer would be the same for an eighth grader?
Yes, because we want to be sure that that, that we have justification and what um, on why we're retaining that student. And the parent may have some information that they can bring to the school that the school's not aware of that is not related to academics. So that's why they want to have a one-on-one conversation, not make a blanket request. Um, and then the school is able to have, have that conversation with them on what this means for this student long-term.
I have a question. Uh, about C, the CTE classes. Some of those uh, they are twelve-month employees by the ag teachers.
Only ag is a twelve-month employee.
Twelve months. But are, are those ag teachers required to teach summer school?
They're not required to.
Okay, they don't have to.
They don't have to. I think I, from talking to Ms. Tolston, we have some that are interested, but they're, but they're not required to.
There were some concern about that. And my thought was if they are already twelve-month employees, then they've already got their work outlined, what they need to do anyway.
Correct, and Ms. Tolston has been fielding some of those questions.
Okay.
From the teachers.
But they will not be, I, I just want to be clear, that ag teachers will not be required to teach summer school.
Right, they're not required.
Already.
Right, we, we have encouraged them. That was the reason Ms. Tolston reached out to them. We've encouraged them so that they could see the benefit of it, but we can't require them.
Right, because they've already got their job set out. I mean, I'm thinking they fly around, set up, whatever ag teachers do. And so that would be an opportunity for another, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Absolutely.
They're tending the farm.
Right, they do one thing that they have already been doing. So they don't need to be taking that opportunity. And, and that could be a job for another teacher that really wants to work on the summer.
Correct.
I have a question, but I just have a comment. The amount of work you guys have put into this and, and your agility and good attitude. With having to do all of this and, and update it and change it on the fly with everything else that you have. On this abnormal, difficult, challenging year. So I want to say thank you.
Well, it keeps changing. We continue to receive um, updates from DPI, so we're adjusting.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Boomer, I have one more for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I have two on you.
We'll have Ms. Tolston help me with the last one. But the, the next one is Craven Virtual Academy to provide you with an update on where we are. We're planning for this. And this is another one that again will require agility as um, legislation continues to change. And we receive updates um, that have not been finalized yet. Um, so with Craven Virtual Academy, this would be our um, one hundred percent virtual option for our students um, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Which would be different than our Craven Live option that was um, available this year. We operate at Craven Live under the governor's mandate that every student um, have access to a virtual option. Regardless of whether or not it was the best option for them. But it gave parents an opportunity um, when they were looking at um, safety um, above anything else. And we definitely want to keep that at the forefront. So that students had um, an opportunity to learn virtually this year. We had some um, a lot of few parents and students who took advantage of that throughout the school year. At this time, we're um, we have not been given a mandate that we have to have a virtual option for next year. So with Craven Virtual Academy, this would be application-based. Um, and looking at students who um, do have the potential for success in virtual learning. So we would be going through an application process that I'll share a little bit more about within a second. Um, on the twenty-sixth, um, in conjunction with the summer school sessions that we had. We also had sessions with the school. we also had sessions with the school leaders regarding Craven Virtual Academy to get their input on the plans that we had, that we were putting forward and, and the proposal that we wanted them to consider and give us feedback. So we went through that same process that we did with summer school, um, with the school leaders. Um, and they provided us with feedback, suggestions and questions that helped us, um, make some updates and changes moving forward. We also, um, met with our K-two Craven Live teachers from this school year. These are the teachers that have been working with those grade levels in a virtual learning environment, um, since we've been, um, in school this school year, to get their feedback on whether or not ver- one-hundred percent virtual learning was appropriate for those, that age group. And we wanted to get information from people who have, um, direct access and were required to do that work during the school year. Because it's one thing for us to say whether or not we think it's appropriate, but for the people who are charged with teaching those students, we needed to get their input. So we had a session with them on April twentieth and invited all of those teachers. So there were about forty teachers that we invited, um, to participate. And we had about, um, just under thirty of them who joined us, as well as some of the elementary school leaders, to give us some feedback. And we talked about the drivers and restrainers, the positives and challenges, as well as the obstacles of providing virtual learning for students in kindergarten through second grade. And after getting their feedback, I brought that information back to the superintendent's cabinet along with, um, other members of the CNI division and to make a final decision on the design for next year's virtual program, which is the reason we landed on third grade through twelfth grade being the most appropriate grade levels, um, at least for this first year of implementation with this program. It does not rule out consideration for adding possibly second grade for the school year, but next school year after that. But we want to be sure that we are starting with the grade level that we feel this will be most effective for. Um, and that was the reason we needed to talk to the teachers who are actually delivering that instruction. We created an informational handout to provide the stakeholders with the details of the program, as well as the application process. And we also included an audio recording. And so in a second, I'll have Stephen take us to the district website so that we can look at that information. So you can see what's out there for the public. The application deadline for students is May twenty-eighth. Um, so that, it gives them some time to review all the information, submit any questions that they may have. As a part of that website, on the frequently asked questions section, it allows them to submit questions that they may have, um, about the program so they can make, um, informed decisions. Um, on the human resource side of this, if there are teachers that are interested in possibly teaching as, as a part of the one-hundred percent virtual program for next year, they are able to complete the district transfer form and we've had some teachers already submit that. And so then we'll go through the review process as if this was a standalone school, um, and considering those teachers for those, um, for those positions. Um, depend, depending on where we get a lot of student applicants from, it could impact the ADM of our school. Like if we were to get, for instance, and I'm only going to use Dr. Patrick because she's here with us. If we were to get seventy-five students from Oak Road who are part of this program, that affects Dr. Patrick's ADM because she would not need as many in-person teachers, um, on her campus. But it may not necessarily mean that all of her teachers are the ones that are interested in, in teaching the virtual program. So that's something that we have to look at in how we, um, do staffing and working directly with Dr. Miller and her team.
So that may be a possibility. But that was just because of grade school as an example, she's got little teachers. That may be that teachers are there who will have to get transferred to another school where the, the need is the greatest.
Yes, and, and placing ADM. So that goes us back to the staffing process with the human resources. It could. Um, and then, again, just the last section there, the, any pending legislation, which there is some out there. Um, one that could require us to, um, set this up as a standalone school. We have already submitted the application for a school number. Um, and, but we have been informed that if we end up not being required to have a standalone school for next school year, that we can withdraw that application and remove that school number. Also, the, another piece of legislation could require that we can only have a certain number of students out of our entire district population involved in the virtual program. So as soon as those either get passed or voted down, we'll know which way we have to have, um, have to move forward. But again, that type of legislation could change some of our planning for this program moving forward. So Stephen, if you could, um, click on the, I'm sorry, question.
Um, yes, about the school code. Um, we received notice from the North Carolina State Board Association last week. Um, and I have a copy of the House bill right here, House Bill six forty-four. Um, the, when did you all submit the application for the school number?
I submitted it last week.
Okay, the, it has already been passed in the House and it's, um, hang on a minute. It has been sent to rules, um, and operations of Senate on five-sixth. The deadline for submitting the application for getting a school number assigned for a virtual academy was May first.
They sent us an update that we had until June first if the legislation passes.
If the legislation doesn't pass and they go ahead and go and, because the May first deadline has already passed the House and it's in, it's in operations and rules at the Senate now. So if they proceed forward with the May first deadline and we haven't applied for a school number, it is my understanding we won't be able to have a virtual school?
That was not my understanding from the legislation. I see, uh, Mr. Gatto shaking his head as well, um.
I, I, I would simply say the legislative process, um, things rarely go through unchanged. Um, and so, um, that day may be the day and that day may not be the day. You were assured by DPI that, that you had until June first. Practical matter, you're going to have until June first. Ultimately, however, whatever the legislation says is what we will do and have to deal with. So, um, but legislation frequently changes as it goes through the various steps.
Pass the House.
Do you see a possibility that we could have virtual school?
I, 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 I would not say I am confident about anything that the general assembly does or does not.
There's also the possibility that what, you, you think that we could not have one?
If, if that is the case, then, I mean, that would impact not just, I mean, several districts. Obviously, Craven County is our first, first priority. But in our recent, um, but, meeting with Dr. Kathy Spencer, um, she meets with us twice a month, that in our, just in our southeast region, there will be several districts that will be impacted by that. Because we're, not everyone had submitted it by May first because we had just received the information the week prior.
I know that Wilson County has submitted, Pitt County has submitted, Onze County already has one and I know that Carteret County has submitted by May, before May first.
I know, we just, we just see what happens, be prepared on what else we need to do. But thank you for the insight, Missy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stephen, if you'll click on the link. The, the website, well, no, this, this is fine. Okay, so this is the brochure, um, just with information about the program. Um, and Stephen, you can just scroll through slowly, um, through this. But it just gives some general information about, um, Craven Virtual Academy. You can keep scrolling, I know there's a delay.
Also, one thing that I like about this brochure is, um, uh, it's, I know everyone won't like it, but I like that these students will be able to participate in activities. I think there's a lot, I think that's an opportunity to get a lot of homeschoolers back, um, that have wanted to be able to do that, but still have our instructions, um, in a home setting, you know, in, in their environment. I think, I think that's a, I, I'm curious to see how it goes moving forward, but I really appreciate that that is a component of this. We all know extrap术是 important.
And so we just, um, gave some general information as well as the support service that would be provided, um, to the students that they would have access to, that all of our students in the district have access to. The partnership with parents, because obviously with our younger students, having that adult near them on throughout the day is very critical to them being successful in this program, which could be the case for some of our older students as well. The application criteria is listed. And then on the last page, it talks a little bit more about the setup for the, um, courses and expectations regarding, um, the students joining their classes synchronously, as well as a communication that would be that would be expected from, that would be expected from, um, the teachers to the parents. And then, um, at the very bottom, that link takes them directly to the application. So Stephen, if you'll click on the other, um, link in the website, I mean, in the assembly agenda, just so we can look quickly at the website. So this is the page that we set up and I give a lot of thanks to Ms. Kelly Williamson for her assistance with this. She, um, actually recorded the voiceover video of the brochure going into more detail, um, for that. So she could just explain it, um, as the parents review the video. And then the brochure is just another copy of what we looked at. And then at the bottom of that page, um, Stephen, if you'll scroll down to the bottom. The application is there, as well as the frequently asked questions. As we receive questions, um, on that page, that may be, um, beneficial for the general public to be aware of, we add them to that frequently asked questions page. Some of the questions that we receive are very specific to a family situation, but some of them are general things that we think would be helpful for everyone to know. So we continue to update, update that page. So that's what the, um, public would see when they go to the website. Um, and this is a tab on the very first page of our website that, um, Ms. Wagner has set up. So they can go through all of that information before making a decision about the program. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'll take questions if you have any additional ones.
Ms., uh, Ms. Hollis, we're going to take a break and we're going to start with you when we get back, okay? So let's take a ten-minute break, please.
Thank you.
What topic are you going to get to? What topic are you going to get to?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you step down, I didn't want to say to you that, you know, we hear lots of good feedback, we share it on teachers and stuff, but out in the business community, I hear lots of good feedback on you and the work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. Robert Millen?
No.
No. Strategic planning?
It's actually, it's actually me. Update on Modern Teacher.
Oh, I'm sorry, we had a Modern Teacher. I'm sorry.
Good morning, members of the board. I want to give an update, as you all requested, about where we are with digital convergence, which is the work that we are doing with Modern Teacher. And just to give a little bit of context, and this is actually some information that I shared at the School Boards Association a couple of years ago in terms of what was the context for our transition to digital convergence, which really is making sure that we have a modern learning environment for our students and that we reflect the fact that our community is changing in significant ways. When I say community, I mean our students, their families, and what they're asking for from our school system. During that year, our Board of Education received recognition by our accrediting agency. We have a strong and supportive education foundation. We still have that. And community support is strong for education. At that time, we had 14,000 students, but it was noted that enrollment was declining. And I'll give a little bit of context for why I continue to talk about that. The strategic plan at that time was more about measures than the goals that we were trying to achieve and the key strategies, and we worked on that as well. Our facilities were aging and continue to do so. And one interesting situation was that we had about 24,000 computers at that time. Most of them were desktops or devices that were not really up to date. You can see that was in 2016, 17, and most of them, a lot, big portion of them, were from pre-2012, which caused us to come to the Board of Education with some recommendations about devices for all of our students and that type of thing. This next slide provides a little bit of the context, and it's a little bit of old data because the last time we were able to capture this data was the 17, 18 school year. But you can see on this presentation or this slide that the trend in our district is a very high number of students that are homeschooled. And we can see this year that that has continued, although we don't have that data for this specific, specific school year. It started out in 2014, 15 at 6.9%, and in 2017, 18, it was about 8.6% of the overall student population, eligible student population in Craven County were homeschooled. And this data is available from the Department of Public Instruction, the Department of Non-Public Instruction and Homeschool. As you all know, we brought together a group, a cross-functional group of our community to create a vision for public education. And this is that vision, and that vision is posted on our wall. Our goal with that vision and engaging the community was to begin this conversation about what our students need to be successful, not just now, but in the future. If you remember, all of that work happened in the spring of 2018. And as a part of that, we had five goals that were established. The learner. And actually, hold on one second, I apologize. I've got something in my way. The educator. Our schools, Craven County Schools will prepare our students for a successful future by attracting, supporting, and retaining a professional, diverse, and agile team of educators. I read that one in particular because never has there been a time where we've asked our teachers to be more agile. Teaching and learning, which is the process. And the last three goals really are about the process of how we do our work. All of our educators will have access to an aligned curriculum and engaging resources to provide our learners high-quality pathways to personal, civic, and professional success. Community engagement and leadership. We would model civic engagement with open and aligned communication relationships across our community, and a great deal of work has been done by Ms. Wagner and continues to be done in this area. And then operations and resources, that we would have a high-performing organizational culture, not just aligned with, aligning the work of the schools in the district, but aligned with the board's policies as well about continuous improvement. And then our mission was that together with our families and community, Craven County Schools will educate all learners to personal, professional, and civic success through challenging and personalized instruction. And these words came from the work of that visioning group. They also came from the work of a strategic planning group that was convened right after the community came together to begin working on the goals. And at that time, we began our engagement with Modern Teacher. And it was at that time around five different drivers of digital convergence. And when we say digital convergence, we mean all these factors that come together to really change how education is being provided. And that has been drastically accelerated over the last four years. But those five drivers originally were leadership, instructional models, modern curriculum, professional learning, digital ecosystem, and the sixth driver was added recently, and that is community, engaging the community in these discussions even further. We established cross-functional teams around each of those areas, and that's where those goals came from and much of the work came from. However, you all know probably what happened in that fall. 2018 spring, we had a vision. 2000 fall, 2018 fall, we had a hurricane. But these are the six drivers of digital convergence. And again, our goal here is to create an infrastructure where we are able to provide learning to students that's flexible, anytime, anywhere, under any conditions, whether their dad is deployed or has come back from the military and is needing to take him or her away for a couple of weeks, they can continue their education. These were the conversations that were happening in our system, but in our community at that time. One, leadership, that we've got to work collaboratively with our stakeholders to set a shared vision and gain buy-in. Work with our community, again, that was the sixth driver. We have to provide professional learning so that our teachers and other stakeholders have the skills, competencies, and pedagogy to transform teaching and learning. We had to have a digital ecosystem, which means we've got to have the correct devices. We have to have Wi-Fi access. We've got to have hardwired access. We've got to have security. A lot of the things that Mr. Lee comes up and speaks to our group about, speaks to the board about, sometimes which are very technical, are very critical to our success. And a lot of the work that's done with this type of work in systems across the nation is done in isolation. And that's the strength that Modern Teacher brought to this, is it was an integrated approach. Modern curriculum, that districts rewrite existing curriculum to incorporate digital content within the instructional framework. And that has informed some of our selection of our resources, and it's starting to inform what our teachers are telling us they want in terms of the resources and the opportunities for learning that happen, and especially again, over the last 15 months. And then finally, our instructional model is classroom learning systems, our PDSA process in the classroom. But this work is integrated with that model as well. One thing I want to be really explicit about, and there's misunderstanding around this, and I think this is where some of the questions have come from, is that when we're talking about modern learning, we're talking about the medium through which we're delivering instruction. Because good instruction has not changed appreciably over time. Now, we know more and more about how students learn, and our model for instruction using classroom learning systems, which has a setting and communicating a clear direction for our students, and then engaging students in the continuous improvement of that learning system in that classroom, that engagement of students, those two things are critical. But sometimes, if we're not face-to-face, we can't do that. So if you think about this process, and the only analogy I really can think about is this, is a wind turbine. When you think of a wind turbine, the turbine's going to roll if there's wind, right? So we have normal conditions, and you're in a place where you've planted a wind turbine, and the wind is rolling, the turbine's going to turn. But when the wind stops, the turbine does not create energy. And in our situation, when the schools close, the physical buildings close, we can't create learning unless we have some other way of connecting the students. And we have seen catastrophically, so many times where we've had to provide learning during those times, but we also know that we have parents asking us to have access to learning in more flexible ways. So one thing I want to emphasize here is that the ISTI standards, which are now North Carolina's Student Digital Learning Standards as of this school year, include these kind of categories. We want empowered learners, digital citizens, knowledge constructors, so students are producers, not necessarily always consumers, innovative designers, so they are designing some of their instruction themselves, computational thinkers, creative communicators, and global collaborators. These are the students we're trying to create in our classroom learning systems. But they have to be created regardless of the medium through which we can teach. Part of the Modern Teacher framework gives us lots of tools, but it also gives us our action steps for creating an integrated system of modern learning, which includes those six drivers. Making sure that we've got the digital ecosystem, we've got the tools to connect us, making sure that we've got the curriculum that can be delivered either face-to-face or online, making sure that we have got all of these factors in place to be successful. Part of it asks us to create this theory of action. And our theory of action in Craven County Schools is, if our educators facilitate a rigorous, inquisitive, and dynamic learning environment, then all learners will be empowered to take risks and work together to create and explore authentic experiences through critical thinking and problem solving. You see those words that are highlighted come from our vision and mission. They come from the words that are in the goals that were created by our 30-member stakeholder group, internal stakeholder group. And there are additional parts of our theory of action. These are helping to drive and should be helping our communication about the work we're trying to do around this digital convergence. Again, we've had two significant catalysts for change. They've also been obstacles to our work. One is Hurricane Florence, the other has been COVID-19. But what is Modern Teacher for us? There, again, was some misconception that was expressed at the previous meeting that our teachers think that Modern Teacher has been a failure or that our teachers don't like Modern Teacher. Well, Modern Teacher is really for us at the district level. It's really for us and our leadership to create the conditions for us to be able to deliver instruction when there is no in-person learning. So it's a framework for district transformation to modern and personalized learning. It's a national network of schools and school systems that are working on this transition together. And so we get access to all of their resources, and they get access to all of ours through their portal. We also get coaching and support for our district leaders, for our principals, as we continue to do this work, to facilitate that district-wide change. And we have a repository of professional learning resources that are aligned to our strategic goals that we can also customize and make them even more personalized to Craven County Schools. And then finally, there's a repository of student learning resources, which we have taken significant advantage of, especially over the last two years. Last summer, we used it for our Read to Achieve camps, and it was very well received by our teachers. This summer, it'll be used for our K-8 summer school. And in addition to the academic content, it also has social and emotional learning content.
I hate to copy that question, but I think it's a recorded question at this point. So when it goes out, when you go out, the teachers that were used it last year that are using it this year, are they hearing Modern Teacher?
No.
They're getting?
They're getting curriculum.
Gotcha.
And so that's part of what we can do better is say, these are resources that we've gotten from this partnership. These are resources, and that's what Dr. Diggs has emphasized, that the coaches along with Ms. Lee are going to be making sure that we add more Craven County, North Carolina-specific content to that work. But again, this, this network has provided us resources that we would never have been able to create on our own with the obstacles and the challenges that we've faced over the last several years. And I also say that I'm the one standing up here and talking about this today because we've had a lot of transition at the cabinet level in instruction. And you can see when we talk about modern curriculum, we talk about instructional models, we talk about professional learning, those things are really heavy in our curriculum and instruction division. And, you know, Ms. Longhan's left and retired, and God bless her, she's probably enjoying the last several months of not being in the middle of all this. But this transition to our new curriculum instruction staff has, these tools have been invaluable because they've provided fill-ins in the gap for us as we've moved forward. And then finally, Modern Teacher has provided resources and support in the areas which I just said that's taken us multiple staff members over multiple months of uninterrupted work. And there has been no uninterrupted time for Craven County Schools, for North Carolina, for our teachers. It's provided the key action steps for our strategic plan in significant ways and a network of best practices in digital and blended learning to call from. The professional learning that was provided to all of our teachers as we began the school year last year came from the modules that are available in Modern Teacher. And some teachers have gone even further with that, and that's our plans moving forward. And it's provided key professional learning for our district during time of transition and our key leadership staff, which is what I just mentioned in terms of our transitions in curriculum and instruction. So we have this dashboard where it shows us where we're making progress towards this goal of digital convergence. And this is information that I've shared in my, in my correspondence to you all as well. And there's areas on here that have been accomplished this year. We just have not checked the box, as an example. But you can see, for example, in digital ecosystem, we still have some things to do in terms of aligning the specific tools that our, our teachers are using, for example, in their classrooms. One of, I think, our teachers' biggest challenges this year is that everyone was trying to grab at every kind of tool that made sense to them. And so as a result, students were in classrooms using And so as a result, students were in classrooms using one tool in this classroom for collaboration, another tool in this classroom for collaboration, and another tool in their third grade class for collaboration. And then as a result, there was maybe some misunderstanding on the part of students, and it was overwhelming for students and sometimes parents. And so some of this work is helping us to narrow down which tools are the most effective for the type of pedagogical decisions that teachers need to make moving forward. And those are conversations that we will continue and are ongoing to have. It fits also very nicely in the discussions that we're having with classroom learning systems. When we ask students to name the tool that they're using that is helping them learn. So when students understand, for example, that they need to do something that's comparing and contrasting, if there's a tool that they're using digitally or on paper and pencil, it's important that they know that that tool is the tool they can take with them to the next grade, to college, to whatever, and that that's a tool that works for them. And in our classroom learning systems work, that helps us and helps their students learn how to learn much better. So the progress through convergence, as I mentioned, especially over the last couple of years, it provided our K-3 Virtual Read to Achieve Camp curriculum. It's providing core content curriculum, which our learning systems coaches are going to add to and further align social and emotional learning curriculum. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have abbreviated that. And then as we move into the next school year, or actually this school year, it provided the blended learning models and professional learning for our teachers. And it's been used to create professional learning that Kelly Williamson has created for our teachers. One of them was Playlist That Sing. And I know that there was a mention of playlists in general, that that's been something that folks have been frustrated with. And that has been a huge challenge because of the reason for the playlist was for students and parents. As we look back on the last 15 years, and now, actually, it's something that's being requested by the North Carolina General Assembly, which is a separate issue. But as we look back over the last 15 months, one of the things that we were told after last spring was, everything is everywhere. There's not one centralized place where our parents can go to find out, what does my two or three students have to do today on Monday, today on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, to keep the parent organized and to keep the student organized. And also to help that parent who became the teacher last spring, and if kids stayed remote, they were the teacher of their school year, so that that parent at home could support that student who was learning at home. They've had to be critical partners. And although it has been frustrating for our teachers, that's something that our parents told us, you know, we need some way of having a centralized location in the playlist, which is a tool that's used across the country and probably across the world as a listing of instructional activities, links to the resources that are being used, and that type of thing, is something that we adopted as well.
So you're saying that the playlist is attached to Modern Teacher?
Well, Playlist is a tool that we, Playlist is one of the professional learnings that we provided that some of the slides came from Modern Teacher. It's just one tool. It's a tool for organizing our instruction for parents and students.
It's associated with the Modern Teacher.
I think people are associating it with Modern Teacher, but a playlist is not something that Modern Teacher made up. It's just professional learning we got from them. Does that help you? So the next steps for this year are to continue to improve and integrate our digital ecosystem. One of the indicators in this area that is the next step is for our vendors who are providing services to us, a lot of which are in the digital space, are talking together about how they can integrate to help us create a system that is more seamless for our students and parents. This has been an area of significant challenge this year as we've had challenges with our single sign-on. Clever, we've come to you a couple of times at the board level just to say, we're having issues with this particular tool or this particular way that people are signing in. We're making changes, and a lot of work has been done by Mr. Lee and Mr. Freibel to free those things up. Better, though, that those vendors who are working with us are communicating with each other to create a seamless ecosystem that we can then deliver for our families and our students, so that they can access instruction. Also, continue to improve blended teaching and learning, integrated with our classroom learning systems work. Making sure that our students understand that if I am using a Venn diagram, that corresponds to this digital tool. So when I'm learning from home, they understand what tool to use on their own if they have to compare and contrast them. Continuing to upgrade our curriculum to be delivered anytime and anywhere. And this is the modern curriculum component of it. One of the things that was a real challenge, again, at the beginning last year of the pandemic, was that students really, we were trying to deliver paper to them, but we were at a point during the pandemic we didn't think we could. And so figuring out how our curriculum and some of our resources did very well provide non-paper-based instructional materials that students could mark up with their devices. And then some of our curriculum, because we're just not at that point yet, did not have that capability. And so we started to try to find workarounds to address those challenges, to make sure kids could continue to learn. Addressing misconceptions about the purpose of Modern Teacher, which again, it's our framework for creating this convergence of these six areas to make sure that we can provide modern instruction. And so that folks don't see, when they're receiving professional development, that any one thing in there is Modern Teacher. No, it's our system of providing professional learning to support their ability to continue teaching regardless of our circumstances. And then also really thinking about, this goes back to some of the digital ecosystem work, integrating our devices and the native apps with the professional learning in blended and virtual instruction. So thinking about what tools we're picking that we have access to for free on our devices, and using those tools to help students master their instruction and the standards. So with that, I'll take any questions that the board would have.
Yeah, I think I was the one that brought up the Modern Teacher situation. So to recap everything you're saying, Modern Teacher is used at a cabinet and a district level, and not so much in schools. So schools wouldn't know of its utilization or how it was used. Because I do remember when we asked the teachers present now, they really didn't use it much.
Yes, sir.
But it's not for them to use, so they wouldn't have a good answer for that.
They receive the benefits of it, but may not connect it to Modern Teacher.
Okay.
So absolutely, I think that's a good way of saying it.
I wonder how it got so confused. To be honest, why did they, so many, they thought it was a type of program that was in the school or somewhere, and they weren't using it, that it was not, I don't?
I think what happened was last summer, when we rolled this out, each school had a representative that delivered part of this professional learning at their campus.
Okay.
So those teachers knew what we, what Modern Teacher was, what the resources were, that kind of thing. And then those conversations about the professional learning, it's kind of like telephone. Once I say, you know, those words, then I make an association with the experience. And so I think that's part of it. And we can do a better job of communicating what we're doing with it to create the conditions for modern learning and continue to improve them moving forward.
And also, so the effect, it wouldn't have a direct effect, or the children wouldn't be able to speak of an effect or how effective the program is, but the implementation of the program from a higher level would benefit the children because it assists the teachers and administrators to help the children in a better way.
I can say unequivocally that we would not have been in the position that we were in last March to be able to turn around digital teaching and learning without this work. Yes.
I would have administrated the way I did?
Some of our administrators, especially the ones that were on our initial team. But again, because we've had so many interruptions, the stopping and starting, we've used the tools, but we haven't had the explicit conversation with our principals unless they were involved in some specific decision-making around some of the tools.
I can see how, you presented today, I can see how it would get convoluted though. Because if you're, if you're in your mind and up here, you know, you're thinking Modern Teacher the whole time, but they're implementing, but if those words aren't being used, they shouldn't be. I mean, they shouldn't be because it's a framework, not a program. So it shouldn't be used, but I can see where a teacher at the classroom level would not be able to necessarily make that connection to the benefit of that framework.
And I think, as I said before, I think the Playlist has been associated with it. And again, the Playlist was a tool that we selected, which is, again, listed in multiple different books about blended and virtual instruction as an organizer. It's really an advanced organizer for students for their classwork. But it got associated with folks, if folks were not pleased with having to create the Playlist. I mean, the Playlist is really nothing more than the public view of your lesson plan. And so it just really depends on how comfortable people were, especially with that at that time. And I think there's been a great deal of comfort that has been gained over the last 15 months. But I would say initially, it was very daunting for our teachers. They have done a phenomenal job transitioning to blended and virtual instruction.
Do you want to have any questions, comments?
I want to, I guess I was going to say for the end, but I think it might be a good thing to fit here. Couple of things, the community group that delivered to us the vision that they saw for Craven County schools. If board members remember, we didn't participate in the discussion. We sat in and we listened to everything that was said. It was our opportunity to be informed by the community, what their expectation was. And I'll call out Mr. Pink, if I may. He's the, one of the, he is the community rep here present today that participated in that. And certainly appreciate that and those that joined him. And that was pretty, if I remember, about six months, five months of pretty rich discussion during those meetings. But it delivered to us, you know, what our charge is for community. So now I'm going to fast forward to a meeting I attended virtually last week as a fly on the wall, again, not delivering anything, just listening to what was being said. It was Faith Connections meeting. And they actually went on for several minutes talking about how effectively Craven County schools had turned on the dime to be virtual, and how much it had helped the students. Now, think about Faith Connection. These are all those churches that have adopted schools that are hand-in-hand. So they know what's going on. They are very concerned that we've not been able to have it, and we're ready to give back. We're all excited about that. But it was their observation as they heard from surrounding communities and others how effective Craven County had been and how much it stood out because of the quick turnaround to the virtual environment. And I think we all remember those days that there were lots of learnings. That's PDSA, if there ever has been an opportunity. There are things that went well, there are things that did not go well. Every step of the way, you're kind of, it's like being a sculptor. Chisel off what doesn't fit, so you can get down to the pure. And so I just, I wanted to say that that's an accolade that came from community, totally unsolicited. There are a lot of people out there that know what's been done in school systems. And so my hat's off to Dr. Doyle, you and your team for leading us through that to be that quick on the ground in the virtual.
Let me also say, we've learned over the last 15 months that we still need paper and pencil. As we all walk into classrooms and still see students in front of teachers with devices, we want some of that to stop. We want them to be using chart paper, we want them to be using sticky notes, we want them to be using those quality tools that really connect, you know, their motor operation of writing things down to memory. We know that's critical. So our charge of the next 12 to 18 months is to find that balance even better, make sure that students see the device as a portal for learning, a place to create, a place to be innovative, a place to learn skills that they're going to take into the career, but really that the learning happens between them and their teacher.
Which is a spot of blended learning, it takes a while to get there.
Yes, yes, it does.
I'm glad you brought that up. About two weeks ago, a parent had called me and was asking me about it. Elementary schools are using pads and not really paper. And she wanted to know why was that? And I'm like, oh, well, I'm a freshman here, so I'll find out. But I'm glad you brought it up, but just sort of making it to the minute, so we could probably address it later. That's something that we definitely need to look into as far as what's allowed, what we can do. But my personal preference, it seems like a pad wouldn't be used until middle school, so the children can get a foundational learning on writing and, you know, retaining what they did right. So just so that they can make it to the minutes, and we can address it later.
And we have, we definitely have some tools that students are using for supplemental instruction, for remediation in some areas, which are computer-based. But we are right, we want them using paper and pencil, writing, you know, and learning to form their letters and that type of thing. Because again, there are connections that are made in their brain that help them to learn at a higher level.
And just to complete, the situation that was described to me, I was only told this, I didn't witness it, but it was a situation where a child in an elementary school, the pad messed up, it wasn't working, and they were scrambling around, oh, because he couldn't finish the assignment, because the pad wasn't working. And I'm like, what do you mean, they couldn't get pen and paper? And that was what was all on the pad, and so they had to complete it on the pad. So this child had to finish it later because the pad wasn't working at the time, which is really handicapping a child, in my opinion. If they don't know how to switch over the pen and paper to complete a task, or if it's not even available to them in a paper format. So I just wanted to make sure that hits the minutes.
Thank you.
I still feel comfortable if you sit on this board. It is a for-profit company, and it's way different than a community nonprofit board. And I don't feel like everybody really knew that you were sitting on this board. I've received a lot of phone calls from the community. The perception is that it's a conflict. I feel like it's a conflict. And we're, I mean, we're spending $82,500 on this. Last year, we spent $123. And so I also want to know why this presentation wasn't in assembly for us to review ahead of time. The first time I've seen it was now. I didn't have access to it, so.
And I'll be glad to load it up. As I mentioned previously, I've been having some issues with my family, so I appreciate the board's grace in that.
We're spending a lot of money on a lot of things. We've got New Tech Network at Rogerville, is that coming out of the restart money? That's $101,000. We've got Discovery Ed, it's digital stuff too, which is $76,000. Better Lessons, which is a lesson plan kind of deal for $25,000. We've got Scenario Learning for, I mean, and.
So Better Lessons is professional learning for our curriculum. So I think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but Better Lessons is professional learning that's helping to support the implementation of our core instructional materials.
I personally do not have a problem with the advisory council. To me, it's no different than what we agreed Mr. Lee could do with Zoom. It is allowing you to be, share what's working in Craven County. It's not, you're not on the board itself, you're on a advisory council. There is a difference. That's the only advisory council from City Hall, there's a difference, there's a difference.
It's a nonprofit, Ms. Man, I disagree.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just, you have your opinion, I have mine. You can't say it's okay, it's okay for one to do it for Zoom, Zoom's a company, Zoom's a profitable company.
I don't think anybody that works in education that should sit on an advisory board or advisory council for a for-profit company that we do business with, that we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars with, I do not think that's ethical.
And I think that that's the reason that we should have a voice at the table, is that we are spending so much of our district's resources, and that's why.
What other counties around us that are having success, meeting and exceeding growth, are using Modern Teacher? I know Onslow isn't, I know Carteret is not, and I do not believe that Pitt County is either. So what districts that touch us that are having success?
There's none that I'm aware of that touch us, but I believe Pickery City Schools, Gaston County, several others are using.
I know that there are three superintendents on that advisory board for North Carolina, and one superintendent in Rock Hill, which sometimes we think of as almost North Carolina. In fact, I have had occasion to talk with all of them, not about Modern, but I know who the superintendents are. So I suspect their systems are using it. But my point would be, when I was with Warehouser Company, I had the opportunity to. But my point would be, when I was with Warehouser Company, I had the opportunity to sit on a number of advisory committees. That was the way we did business because it was our opportunity. We started out with Oracle. Lynn, do you remember that? The Synergium, the maintenance system, it was Oracle based when Oracle was barely even known. And we started out sitting on their, uh, panels for advise, uh, advisory, uh, purposes to tell them what worked, what didn't, and we were spending a lot of money. That's the way business is done in my mind, in the, uh, business world. Uh, you want to be, you wanna seat at the table to have a say. Now, do you receive a benefit? That's a totally different thing. If you receive a benefit, known or unknown, that, that's not proper in my mind. But to be, uh, have a voice at the table, I think is critically important. And I want, I encourage, uh, I encourage anybody, uh, Tabari and the work he's done, Montrell, what you've done, the work others have done. I wanna know that Craven County is sitting here at the table, looking at best practices, what's working, how people are using it, how we can leverage it and advantage our students and our system. And if we're not doing that, I think we're going backwards. So, uh, when I see a planned model that moves like this from a vision to how do you conceptualize that and put the elements in place to drive it and make it happen in this cohesiveness and consistency, that's what I want to see. And, uh, thank you, Lynn.
I do hear you though, and I think that if that's a policy change, if you wanna bring forward as a policy so that we can be consistent with it and the board can consider it, then that's fine. But I, I don't think it's fair to, I don't think it's fair to be inconsistent with it. Some people can be on advisory council and others can't. Um, there's either a benefit or there's not, and I think that's something we can look at with policy. So I don't want to dismiss you for not hearing.
Well, I would like to see the, the actual physical data, um, as to exactly what Modern Teacher for, I don't know, now with another eighty-two thousand dollars coming up for expenses for it, I would like to see the actual data that it has actually physically accomplished in this district. And this, and this, I would like to see the actual data.
I think the first bit of data is what we were able to accomplish last year. To be able to make sure, yeah, and make sure every child.
Other districts had to do the same thing.
And did it, it took much longer.
I was, uh, we were up and running with Microsoft Teams immediately. I had a teacher that had been teaching remotely because of the way their schedule was set up. You and I discussed that.
And I, I, I'm, again, I don't wanna be in the position of, of, um, second guessing or armchair quarterback in any other system that has had to do this work over the last fifteen years. It has been, or fifteen months, it has been gargantuan. But we were particularly well positioned with our devices, with the work that we did and with the staff that's in this room to make sure that we could serve children very quickly after we had to close. And I'm, I'm proud of their work and proud of, um, what was accomplished for children.
I think Craven County staff has done a great job, but I am just questioning the viability of the expense of Modern Teacher and the fact that we were on an advisory board that we didn't really seem to know about. That's my issue.
And, and again, the board, um, I, I understand your issue and I appreciate that feedback.
I think the, the idea today was not, the idea today was to get every sport on the Modern Teacher program to see how it was working in the system. We needed some insight, there were some questions about it, teachers had questions about it. They said that they thought it was a waste of money because it was, they were not utilizing the program. So what we, according to what your presentation today, you, it seems that it is being used, but not in the way that the teachers thought it was, they thought that it was something that they had to use, so. So, uh, so that's what we needed to hear about the program itself, how it is, how it is being utilized. It is, is it something that we need to continue to purchase to use? And I think that's the bottom line with that.
And our goal is not to have to continue forever, is to get to the point where we have, we feel like these systems have converged, are interlocking and strong so that we can move forward on our own. Um, and so this is not a forever thing, this is an investment in what we've already accomplished in, in the future to continue to make sure that we provide choices and opportunities for students that, um, we are getting more and more requests for, uh, so that we can bring back some of those homeschool students. We can provide instruction in that way. Um, there's no benefit to me, except a loss of my time from my family and from the school system if I'm sitting in there. But when I'm sitting there, I'm representing Craven County Schools and advocating for our work and for the work that's been done by our teachers and our staff.
Kind of chair, if I just might ask, I apologize, Dr. Doyle, if you can finish your statement.
Yes, ma'am.
I like what, what Mr. Smith said about we need to be consistent. Um, whether it's a conflict or not, and I concede to, uh, what Mr. Gatto said, it might have the appearance of their propriety. And that's legal gobbledygook, may, may not to protect, uh, the person on the board, but what is the appearance that the pump attack? So I think in the future, we should, we should examine it so that we are consistent with what we do. That's my two cents, ma'am.
I would add one more comment if I may.
On the Modern Teacher, you were speaking how it was so effective in getting us, um, online quickly. And then Ms. Muse was saying that we jumped in, we used, what was the app of the program? On Microsoft.
She was talking about Teams.
Basically, what tools are the Modern Teacher? And I always say this because I, I, I was the first one who brought it up. What are the tools of Modern Teacher that helped and allowed Craven County Schools to snap to digital learning so quickly?
So the tools.
Versus the teachers being the ones to help bring it.
The tools were in the stepwise action steps that we took at the district level to get to a point where we knew what digital tools to use, what, um, instructional methods to use, that type of thing. It is what got us to that point. It's not a software program. It is a framework, it is the steps, it's the professional learning. It's all of the things that we need to take action to do in an organized location, integrated so that I'm not doing something in isolation from your work. We know that there's work that both of us do that intersect and we have to do it together. That is what this framework provides. It also provides a network to other districts and the best practices that they're using so that we have access to that information. So we, we use Microsoft Teams in Craven County Schools. We also use Zoom at this point, and that's a, a discussion that we're in the process of talking about. Where do we have duplicates? How do we need to eliminate some of those duplicate tools? Some of which are at this level, some of which are at the instructional classroom level. So it's all the steps, all the resources that we were provided, the, the curriculum, the lessons for our teachers that they were able to incorporate that has made us be able to do that. But having the infrastructure ready, having the hotspots ready, having the devices already ready, starting to integrate the tools that we use, making sure that Microsoft Office, for example, was available on those devices, like all those things, those decisions, and getting those decisions happening at the cabinet level and departments and that kind of thing is what got us to this place.
I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna assume our two tech guys over here, with, without Modern Teacher, would you all have been able to know what we needed to do or is that beyond your expertise? As far as the routers, the systems, applications that could be used to go digital? Or was it Modern Teacher that gave you all the wisdom or knowledge to know what to do? Cause I'm not that, I, I used to be a tech guy, but, um, I don't know about a state level, but I could definitely would have known what to do to take us digital. And I'm just asking, would you all have known what to do if Modern Teacher wasn't here?
Some of the, um, some of the improvements or improvements we made regularly in the way, as our network improvement is something that we're always kind of proud to be there, or the network is. But it did give us a little bit of a framework, it's part of our goal, uh, to, to the hotspot, identifying things like that we would need to send home. So they helped us out a little bit on that.
So Modern Teacher helped you all. Great, okay.
And a reminder that there's six different areas that we touched with this, most of which is in curriculum instruction, but also in the digital space, which is where these folks are at the leadership level, um, and then also in professional learning and, um, um, instructional model.
Okay.
Um. I guess the only reason I was saying that was I was trying to see the Modern Teacher, since you all are at the utilization level, the Modern Teacher helped you all as far as helping our, our district go digital. But I mean, I got the answer, I got the answer. He, he already said that it helped him, so that's that.
Okay, I, I want to think back just a little bit. Uh, if I remember correctly, we were beginning rollout of the trainings, uh, when Florence came. And Florence was a big interrupter. Um, it also taught us that we needed to be able to have school when kids couldn't be in the classroom. Okay. We gave Dr. Doyle a challenge when she came to help us find a way to get one-on-one. Um, one-on-one is directly tied to Modern Teacher. The rollout of all the laptops, the notebooks, uh, whatever, um, that was part of that energy to get us in position. Um, and we actually benefited from it. We did not know that we were gonna be out of school for a year, but we did know we could have hurricanes again, we could have days that, uh, we lost to education. And, um, so that rollout was critical. Well, that came under that framework, just like the community input came under that framework. It's, it's a big thing and it's how you at the top level make your plan that affects everything and affects everybody. So, um, that was a big piece in my mind. Uh, by the way, back there in Florence, uh, when Florence interrupted the rollout, I remember distinctly sitting in the meeting and hearing, uh, that you were on the advisory council. Um, and understanding and then going out and looking at Modern Teacher to see what in real it was and seeing other people that were on the advisory. That was, that's information was totally disclosed years ago, pre, pre Florence. So I don't, I, I just don't understand that, and with our accolades. Now, the board's a little bit different now, but we were supporting that effort. And I see all of this that has come together, what technology is doing in terms of the rollout. You can't roll out when you don't have the, uh, the notebooks in the, in the student's hands, you've gotta have that. And once you have that, then you've got the issue of how do you get them connected? Because not everybody had connections, you know, it's step by step, but there's something at the top that is the big planning. And that's what I see this being in my mind.
I'm piggybacking on the tripod, but, you know, we are a different board, so let's always go back and discuss it. But before, in the years, um, our folks being asked to go to our advisory council was an honor. And so we never thought twice about it. I mean, that's different than a board where you're getting a profit, but advisory council has been around forever. It's part of the secret evaluation, still, still, I've worked on many, all of our secret, so many. So as, I mean, at least for me, as I hear it way back, it doesn't process and stick out in my mind because it's standard for our superintendents who have served in those capacities, different ones, not for modern teacher, but for, for different ones, but, um, but that's something we can always revisit because we are a different board. So, but I, that's how I would recommend that discussion going forward, not keep beating it up because it's a bad thing when boards in the past have thought it was a, a good thing. Um, and a good thing for Mr. Lee, if you, I mean, I didn't want to throw him under the bus, I think it's a great opportunity. So, I mean, you know, but, and you're not the only one, you're just the one that was sitting right in front of me. So I'm sorry, there are principals and others who serve on advisory council in advisory ways. So, but I think that's the discussion that we're talking about, we should do that as a policy, uh, because we are consistent and, uh, make sure that it still reflects what this needed more value.
Well, I'm glad that you actually brought up Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee, you've worked in how many school districts before you came here and you handle technology? Great. And not your, I don't know exactly what you did in your last district, the one right before you came here, but you did a one-to-one device rollout in the district before that, right? Did you have Modern Teacher to help you with that? Just wondering. But you saw the need and the importance of children having a one-to-one device, is correct? And you kind of spearheaded that whole thing and negotiated contracts and leases and all that stuff, right? Just checking.
But there was not, there's a big difference. There was not a requirement for every student in all the counties to be taught remotely from home.
No, but they were prepared.
But you're not prepared until your teachers are prepared to deliver the instruction.
I think we just need to, uh, discuss this later because we'll get it off that. The task was to see if we get an idea of what the Modern, uh, Modern Teacher Program is, how it's used in the system, and if it's beneficial to us. And I think the misunderstanding was that teachers thought it was something different than what they thought of. They thought it was a program that they had to use in the class to get with them. But what we see, it was not that. It's a framework for other things. And so, uh, and that's, that's the issue that we still try to, you know, and, and I'm sure that later on we will decide as a board whether or not we want to keep the program. But our purpose today was to, uh, learn more about it so that moving on, we can decide whether or not this is something that we want to do in the future, if we still see that there's a need for it. And you said that this is something that we don't need forever.
Correct.
And that, you know, so I guess the thing is that we have to decide, we enough with enough with the program. And additionally to that, we have to decide whether or not we want our, um, leaders to be on advisory board. And this, and, and so this is something that we need to discuss as well. But I don't think that today is, is not, is not what we need to talk about right now. So I think that this is something that we need to get together as a board to discuss, because we got different things about it. And so we need to get together later on and, and at a appointed time to discuss it. And here we'll move on there, listen, Doyle.
Yeah, I'm, um, I support you on that move to move forward. But as a new board member, just so I understand, we meet twice a month, and I'm not trying to go against what you're saying, because I totally support you. But if, if we don't talk about it now, when will we, do we talk about it? We don't meet beyond the two meetings to talk about things, you know? So I don't wanna keep going on about it either, I wanna go on to the next and some people have to discuss.
Yeah, I agree with you, to, uh, get a flow session to talk about it.
I got you, I got you, I got you.
Some things that we need to say.
I got you. I got you now, okay. Well, just an open session, I'll say this, I think the whole thing was brought up. Some people thought that Ms. Doyle was on a board that might have been getting some type of conversation. I, I don't believe she was. I can agree with you all that sitting on a board is important. I, I don't think it's a bad thing for a superintendent to sit on a board. It was bringing value to the county, to the community. But the whole thing was, is it being used, is it effective? And I thank Ms., um, Doyle for the report. But at this later meeting that we have, I just think we would need to have more input from more people that's using it so we can actually know. Is, cause I don't doubt your report, but you just, you want more data, more input from the users of the program before a true final decision can be made, not just one voice. And that would be if it was Ms. Doyle presenting, if it was you presenting. Or I hope if I was presenting, you all would want to hear from more than just me saying what it is and how it works. So, and that's how, in that statement.
Right, because initially, I, for my lack of log, initially I thought that you were going to have some teachers in it, that teachers from the schools would say yay or nay, I, I do like the Modern Teacher Program because it has helped me to do this with my class. But, uh, apparently the teachers are using it, but they're not aware that it's being used. So I don't even know if they could have come and given a good presentation if they didn't know all the details. So it seems like to me, there should be more communication from Dr. Doyle to the principal, to the teachers, so that they'll know, you are using it, you know. So that they'll know, you, you are using it, you know, and, and, and this is how it benefits it. I think that would, to clear that up, I think that would be more beneficial as well.
Thank you, Dr. Eber.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. I think it's a lack of communication.
Is, is there a chance that uh Dr. Patrick or Mrs. Hardy wants to make a comment? Because they're in that connection uh between administration, uh part of administration and uh the teachers in the schools.
Well, if they weren't part of the training last year, then I wouldn't want to put them on the clock if they don't have any knowledge of as well.
Yeah, we asked them last time.
As I said, this is an, this is a tool that cabinet is using to organize our work. So that's the folks that are sitting back there.
Yeah, that's who we need to talk to.
They're benefiting from it. They're receiving services from it, but they might not call it modern teacher.
That's what I'm saying. So I would put them on the clock unless they just want to follow here to do it. Because that's the opportunity that's there and fine. Well, like I said, we can ask the cabinet. They may want to add something to it. Since they're the one who's using it.
And I'm, so, so, everything that Dr. Doyle, he put into her presentation as far as my side of the work and working with other leaders and um learning. She has shared in her presentation, um, and not all of them always refer to as modern teacher, which would not be how it's got to be done that way. Um, it's the resources that we get that we implement as a part of our, with professional learning that we're using as well. Had for summer school, I were using those instructional modules, um, the teachers can utilize it. For them, they're instructional models. Um, last summer they made it, they may have, well, they don't introduce this. We were probably told to them that they were using modern teacher instructional model. Um, but it wasn't designed for them. The teachers with the same instructional models for the school year. They were designed for fifteen, fourteen to eighteen. And we had the same design for our K eight for this summer school that we will be adding to the work of our teachers and our um. Again, it's an instructional, instructional, so instructional material um that we can utilize and whatnot that is their teaching modern teacher. So I think again, I really do do the work, like um you said, you got the whole mention. First, improving our communication of what it is and then what they're um, what they're working with it. It's like for the teacher and the school.
I would agree. Uh, I just wanted to also add that over the summer, as we were preparing to enter the school year, knowing that it was going to be our, um. Kelly Williams and Dr. Doyle themselves and myself, we used the modules and modern teachers to develop the professional learning that we deliver to um principals and then the principals that are delivered it to their staff. Make sure everybody was having a consistent message about what learning might could look like. And we brought them all in and we um had an opportunity to give back and then um make changes. So they may not have known it was modern teacher, but that was the platform or the material that we were using to develop what would work for Craven County. It was the, it was the base for our work. Um, and, and I believe that that gave them a lot of going to choice about platforms. So you might have about thank you, Renation. You heard about um. Um, there's seven, yeah, flip, five, there's seven models that we introduced to everyone. And then we were there with the trainers, drivers, what were our best, our teaching individuals in school. They collaborated about it. They investigated it for professional learning. And then they used the one that they felt was the best fit in their environment. That all of that began um with the material and the models that we had through modern.
And are based on instructional practices, right? Not just, not just the bike. Yes, thank you. That's correct.
So the only, I, I guess the only thing that I would add, well, what Ms. Rampon said, well, from a technical side, we're the support. I mean, that's also all, all of what is, is applying. But I think that's very simple enough. But the second part, the second thing that I would add is modern teachers without capacity. When we brought them to this, but at the time, we needed to pass, we really didn't have a lot of expertise in running the block. So it's past the ability to say, can you help us? In the end, this is more of a modern picture, it was a place that they want to sell. Because they're not here for help. I mean, it is based on what they do is they come into the culture at a certain level. And then sort of all where you are, you have their, their power. So at some point, uh, we would actually have modern teachers not using it. Um, it's a point we would have been learning and answering. So it is past the ability to, to prepare by nine, ten, eleven, ten, you know, with young participants.
Okay. Okay.
And I would say, uh, the program, a lot of the use, uh, program, the, the, the curriculum. It's a resource or a platform to help develop processes and, and, uh, I think it's a program. There are teachers expect that you get them something and the old days of evolved some rules. Now, um, it can be a critical use which they expected, you know, something to give them. This is more of a knowledge and process and procedure and platform to help aid with their own. And that's where I think.
So after you said you all, all have spoke. I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Wagner.
And the expectation in the district level was for them to be on the website. So that all the families, we know exactly what they were bringing, really, 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 really. And at a different level of play, we had training on some modern, that would be the top area. To be able to show different levels to use in the program. I think that would help our family in condition. When we went to that world in March, it wasn't that everybody was comfortable. And so through the summer, what was coming and what was being expected, it helped how we can use that world of all. So from that perspective, I think that's, I appreciate that. It is though, it's actually, it was just something part of the.
Dr. Doyle, you have something?
Yeah, I was saying, so, so it seems like the vote of you all will be using, not losing, correct? Everyone that spoke. Okay.
And, and, and Dr. Doyle, thank you for the presentation. Uh, you had cleared a lot of thinking, things that we did not know. And so I'm thinking that even the teachers, uh, we have a better understanding, but um. But like I said, I think it was a lack of communication, but I think that communication is clearer now than what it was. And we continue to make it clearer in the future. I don't think that we, uh, and not only necessarily with this program, but for any, well, this. I see a program.
This framework.
This framework, but for other framework as well and, and also the program.
And I think, I think hopefully as we get into the next normal school year, that it won't be so, you know, pushed upon our staff and they'll feel a little bit easier to adopt new strategies, but also to understand kind of where it's coming from and why.
Thank you, Dr. Doyle. We appreciate that. Um. Am I not, am I, are we on human resource now? Okay. Dr. Miller?
All right. I'm here today to present the H R Division Report eleven for May twenty twenty one. I do want to bring several things to the board's attention. Um, particularly under B two, the classified area, you're going to see lots of folks there that have worked for us for some time. One of the things we did um after getting input from the principals. Um, we were having our TA bus drivers be annual employees and then the principals had to send in more than a hundred recommendations each year. So, and one of the things we wanted to do to help support um them, but also our employees that have done what they're supposed to do. Obtain their C D L and driving a bus for us, that they become permanent employees. Um, so you'll see a list of folks there and I had my folks update that this morning to make clear that those are T A slash bus drivers. Because it is a dual position in Craven County School. So you will note that has been added since you last had that um report, but it says T A bus drivers. And the reason for all those folks is they've worked for us for some time and we want them to feel secure in, in their employment, but also so principals don't have to re-recommend them every year because that was causing an issue for folks' email to be shut off and potentially lose benefits if, if um we didn't get, get those recommendations in a timely manner. So that's a reason you're going to see a lot of those names. You will continue to get T A bus drivers in a temporary um capacity until they've actually obtained their C D L and driving a bus, then we will make them permanent as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention under B two.
I need to have this deal. I need to discuss something on personnel, but I mean, I have a, a question I need to ask.
Okay.
I think somebody else has a question.
Close session. Absolutely. Any other questions you could, you have for me openly or we will discuss in close session. That's all I have for you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Lee?
Chairman, while she's coming up, I want to bring you or bring your attention to the fact that there was a um contract for fuel, fixed fuel contract that has been moved now to the board meeting agenda as a separate item. It will not be on consent. Just because we've just gotten the contracts um late last night, they had updated contract and we want to have some time for Mr. Gatchel and Mr. Lee to review again before it's presented to you for approval. Yeah.
So we don't, we don't need to discuss it today.
No, no. It's, it's, and it's been moved to the board meeting agenda.
Good morning. I wish I had something more exciting, but I don't. Um, I'm here on behalf of the school nutrition department seeking approval to purchase a brand new freezer truck um for the deliveries of food to our schools. We um sent out a bid and had four return bids and we awarded that bid to the most qualified um company.
I don't say anything about bids, but I want to say something about you. Take a lot of sitting out for the uh, arms, the arm to table thing. I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. I don't want to start it to feel without you hearing. That I, I never, I'm never opposed to people moving on and doing better for themselves. Because I mean, there was just constant chatter about you and um, and what you bring to our system and I appreciate that very, very much. Might bring us a boring talk day today, but thank you for everything else.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you.
It was wonderful.
Thank you.
But who was listening?
Good.
I had a second day, so you must, must have been, you missed the two. But you did a wonderful job. Uh, it was outstanding. Uh, those, the three high schools participated, it was great.
And they had a blast.
Uh, Miss, Miss, there was a lot of uh good vibes in there. People really appreciated, uh, it, it was good.
Thank you.
And uh, the judges had a such decision.
They did.
I'm glad I was not wrong.
They did. They did, and some of those.
They went where, but it was take a lot of planning on your part. And uh, it was well received. We appreciate it.
I have a team of good staff, so thank you for that. So do we, Mr. Lee, do we?
Yeah, then uh thumbs up, send it to consent. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, Denise Altman, finance lady.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item for your consideration and approval today. It is the public school building capital fund application. As you're aware, North Carolina general statute provides that a portion of the proceeds from the North Carolina State Lottery Fund is transferred to the public school capital fund uh in accordance with general statute one fifteen C dash five forty six point two. These applications must be submitted annually in order to release funds for payment on school debt uh from the public school capital fund. So each year I bring this application to you because it allows the funding to be released to Craven County government since they pay the um school service debt amounts on our behalf. Um, this application also has to be signed by the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and the chairman of our Board of Education. So you'll see in your attachments, a copy of the actual application where it shows the total debt payment of four million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's those three amounts in the middle added together to comprise that total. And this is the amount that Craven County uh government will pay on our behalf for our school debt. So we just need you to consider approving this and we will have to uh ask our chairman, chairwoman to sign it. And then we will submit it to the county commissioners for their signature and approval as well.
I'll sign it today.
Um, it's usually best if we go ahead and do it.
It's much money, yes.
That way.
Can I just ask you to explain it a little bit because we've had several new board members since we took on this debt? And what is it paying for that we need to spend a few minutes on history of that?
These are going to be some of the old schools now. In, in consideration with, you know, all of our buildings are old. The newest of our buildings are going to be Creekside Elementary. So part of it is related to Creekside Elementary and part of it is related to improvements that were made at J T Barber. And there's one other school that was, um, it might be. Um, but I know that there was an add-on area at J T Barber Elementary and renovations done there as well. And these are the bonds, construction bonds, school bonds that were used to fund those renovations. So the newest is actually from two thousand and nine. There's a refunding there, but that is, that is the county's work. The, the work that we did with the renovations, the most recent was way back in, you know, I think Creekside was built in two thousand and six. So um, two thousand and six to two thousand and nine is when those improvements were actually taking place. And what ends up happening, which is really weird because no other government does this, we own the assets, the county owns the debt. So we have to um work through this process every year to allow the state to release the funds to the county directly since the county is making the debt payments for us on this, on these improvements. Is that what you were?
For me, but it's very, I'm sure everybody, you're the newest one. How long, how much do we have left?
I know that we don't have much, uh, and I think that either twenty-four or twenty-six is when all of the debt should roll off. And so that is a consideration of the board of commissioners as they think about our capital outlay plan, our long-range facility plan.
That's it.
I, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chairman. Just from my understanding, um, the four billion, two hundred thousand roughly dollars. Is that all lottery money that we've received?
We don't actually receive that much. That is the debt that the county pays on our behalf. Typically, the lottery funding that we receive every year that goes towards that, a portion that they get from this application is generally between nine hundred thousand and a million dollars.
Well, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Funding the difference as part of our budget every year.
Um, and to that point, it was the obligation that they took on, on our behalf to be able to do those improvements. I'm wondering if Oaks Road, uh, Media Center, possibly Trent Park, um, there were several.
Smaller projects.
J T Barber, of course, and Creekside. Um, but uh, when they took that debt on at that time too, they had a stream of funding that they thought was going to be there. Part of that was lottery, uh, at a much higher level than it ended up being.
Right. The last several years, it's been much, a much smaller amount. It's, I think last year may have been, the last two years were right around a million dollars, between nine hundred and fifty and a million dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for anybody? Send uh thumbs up, put this on consent. All right. Thank you.
You, I, I think it would be beneficial if she could get a vote now, if that would be okay with the board.
I move that we uh approve the application for public school building capital fund with Carolina Education Lottery.
Thank you.
Is submitted.
It has been moved as second that the Board of Education approved the public school building capital fund application for four million, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty five, six, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which would pay the debt on limited obligations bond. Um, you have, I have a red card question. All those in favor that be more by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, have it. And motion passes.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Barely made it.
So I came here, there's next two items. The first one is the summer program revised. You know, I came in April and got it approved for what we were going to do with the summer program and remediation. But then when House Bill 82 came through and everything was kind of figured out with that, we've come back and we already have notified DPI. So we do need to get approval again to, we want to just realign our dates. We don't have multiple things going on because we were going to start June 2nd and end June 9th and then test the 10th and 11th. So what we're going to do is the attached document is just a revision of it. And what we'll do is we'll start June 7th, like the summer, summer school and RTA. And then June 28th and 29th, we will be assessing students that meet the criteria to go through a reassessment who did not make a level three or higher. So that is that. Any questions?
Any questions in the way? Does not, we send it to consent. Thumbs up.
Okay. And the next thing is the class size waivers for the spring that we need to submit. We have actually already notified DPI of them, but we have to have it approved by the board. And so in the item, you'll see the list of the schools and which classes and grades K through three are over the 21 student class size limit. As of this morning, actually Oaks Road is down to only one classroom that's above the limit and Vanceboro Farm Life is down to, excuse me, three first grade classes. So one of their classes has fallen to 21. So students have.
At the level.
Yeah, they're at the level. So what we're doing is waiting to see how things fell out so that submitting the correct ones. So when we, after signatures, we'll resubmit these with those two being. Any questions?
Any questions in the way? Does not, thumbs up, welcome to consent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
Yeah, everyone as well. It says break. Do we need a break? Should we go on to Dr. Doyle's report? Dr. Doyle?
The first item that I have for you is the board meeting schedule. We've checked all the dates for your training and anything that would be offered by the School Board Association. And so the dates that we provided last month stand. And so with, unless there's any feedback from the board after a month of reviewing it, then we would request that you move it to consent for approval and posting for the public.
Any questions? Thumbs up for approval. Consent, consent. Okay, thank you.
The next item is about public participation at board meetings. This was a policy that was requested for review by at least one board member. Just additional information that was requested last time. Sorry, I'm having some problems with my screen here. Just a survey of public comment that is provided in districts around us during the closure. Many districts, and this is actually in the file, that is public comment survey that's attached to the item. During the closure, many districts or actually around us allowed email public comment to be received. However, right now, currently only one system in our region allows that and that's Pender, none do. And then moving forward, only one is thinking about making a change in that and that may be Pitt. However, they have not decided to do that or not. So in terms of receiving public comment by email, only one, maybe two districts is intending to move forward with that process. And so that is up to the board for further consideration and or feedback in terms of revising your current policy.
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. Thank you, Dr. Doyle, for providing that information. If the board members recall, I initially asked for this information in view of the fact it concerns me that during the work session, the stakeholder came, was made to give a written statement, which is our policy. Quite frankly, I feel good about it now and don't feel the need for there to be any action.
Thank you. Really don't need any action on this. Everything's okay. All right.
The next, actually, the next policy really is under the chairman's report, but chairman, if you'll let me just give you some introduction and then you all can take it from there. You okay with that? All right. So it is Policy 2340 parliamentary procedure at the last board meeting. I believe again, it was Ms. Clark asked that we think about benchmarking our policy around the policies of surrounding districts and also a couple of others, Wake being one of them. You can see the benchmark data attached to that. You can also see that there are two specific districts, Pamlico is a third, but I highlighted two. One was Pitt County and the other one was Wake, that they have a specified kind of order of how they conduct business at their meetings as well as specific actions that they will take for procedural motions. And they list those out. The benefit to the board is that it's a lot simpler than the thick book, that is Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. But it's up to the board whether you want to consider making a change to your policy. You can see that of the other districts that were surveyed, only one other in addition to Pitt and Wake have a specified policy that lists out, and that is Pamlico. The rest of them use the policy that you have, which is very concise, but it also refers to the full Robert's Rules of Order newly revised, which again is a very lengthy document. It takes a scholar, I think, to master that work. So once we get a little bit of direction from the board in terms of how you best feel your operations would work, we can revise to match either one or both of Wake and/or Pitt. This started because Mr. Gatchel had brought the Pitt County as an exemplar, which had been created, I believe, in 2014. So I leave that to the board for further discussion.
Comment, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
I love Robert's Rules of Order, but it's rather convoluted, obtuse. So I also defer again to Mr. Gatchel and recommend the hybrid simplistic version of Pitt that basically will help everybody.
I like it. I like looking at those two, Wake and Pitt, and making one that's great. The best part of the boat for us.
So we all in agreement that we will look at Wake and Pitt, try a combination of those three motions. Okay, we'll bring it back?
I don't know if we need them. We don't need them.
We'll just use those two and make a combination policy and then bring that forward for our first reading next time.
Thank you.
There's also a referral, Robert's Rules, I'm referring to myself, for dummies that you just might want to look at as well. It's rather interesting, these, is Robert, you know how they have those dummy versions of dummies, but it's Robert's Rules for Dummies. It is really pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Doyle.
And then there's one other policy which you all asked for review and that is Policy 7820 Personnel Files. The benchmarking to that is attached as well. There were a couple of boards that provide some specific direction about when personnel files can be reviewed. One is Brunswick County Schools, the other is Anzlo County Schools. And you can see that language is included in the summary. And really, it's up to the board about whether you want to consider being more specific and explicit about when personnel files are reviewed. There was no one that I could find in their policy that said anything about providing notification.
And I would be fine with not providing a patient if the full board reviewed the policy. Because I would feel like if the full board agreed, like if a board member asked to use the chair and then the chair discussed it, we agreed, it was worth it. I wouldn't feel like, I would not personally feel like the person needed to be notified. So to me, that's a good compromise. If my concern would be to, instead of you or Dr. Miller, whoever decides to do the personnel files, it would be, the board member wants to review a personnel file, they would ask the chair, the chair would, the full board, when you decide to look or not look together, right? That's what those were saying.
I'd be happy to give you my advice on that.
That'd be great.
We have talked about a close session, Dr. Doyle.
Then that's all I have.
I uploaded it online, but I might have to refresh.
So I put all those on the board meeting agenda, not the work session?
Yeah, we'll just move it forward. The goal will work to Thursday night.
All right. It's time to hear from our principal of the year and our teacher of the year. We'll start with Dr. Patrick first.
Okay, good afternoon. I believe the request was to provide a summary from the principals' meetings, the last principals' meeting that we had. And so that is what I prepared to share today. And so if you would like me to share something differently, please let me know. But that was my understanding of the request. So we had our principals' meeting on April 29th. This was a face-to-face meeting held over at the tech center. It was a half-day training or half-day meeting. We received information from Darlene Brown with Partners in Education. We also reviewed upcoming calendar dates. So we did some calendar alignment. We did a debrief as well as a plus delta of the board's organizational review. So we spent some time discussing those items. Dr. Miller reviewed LEED expectations as well as information regarding crowdfunding. And then we reviewed dates for professional learning for the summer, particularly some things with classroom continuous improvement. And then the principals had an opportunity to give some feedback on the strategic plan, particularly the action plan template, the strategic plan, as well as the organization of school improvement teams. And then that concluded our day.
Thank you, Dr. Patrick, for that update. We appreciate that. Teacher of the year?
Sorry? I am unaware, I was unaware of an update that I needed to give, but if you would let me know what that was about, I'd be glad to do what I can on spot.
Oh, it's just, we know that your journey is almost over and we just want to have some words of expressions and your experiences and.
Well, okay, absolutely. My journey is almost over and I have to apologize right now for the times I turned my camera off because the day's the last day with students on a regular schedule and they're coming by to say farewell. So that's been, I felt like I just had to go and meet them at the door for a second. But I've learned so much this year. This journey has opened my eyes to the complexities. I'm very, very well-versed on the many levels in the classroom and at the school location. This has opened my eyes to a lot of important parts that go on behind the scenes and that, and I've seen a lot of similarities to the classroom. I see folks bringing many different perspectives and success looks differently through different, through different eyes, through different spectacles. And, 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 and you know, this has been a really different year for all of us, every single one of us, not the least of our students. And, and I've seen folks really striving on all levels for those students. But like in the classroom, I believe that when difficulty strikes, when there are issues and belief systems that clash or cause us all to stop and take a breath, I believe cracks and fissures that are already underlying are there. And I think as educators, we know that business as hand cannot move forward until we address those things. And I think this year has reminded us all to recommit to what we're here for, what we believe in, why we show up every day, why we work so hard and why we share our differing views. Because every student in this school comes with, in this county and the state and the nation come with all of these different experiences and backgrounds. So it's all relevant and it's all important. I was honored to be selected as teacher ambassador for this year. I don't know if I lived up to what is traditionally done, but as with anything, I count it success if I learn. And I certainly have. Thank you. Thank you for, thank you for that.
Thank you for your hard work and you are an excellent and plump to speaker.
Well, thank you.
All right. I would do, we thank both of you ladies for helping us out this year. You have, you have helped us well and we appreciate all your input, your insight and helping us to carry out these board meetings. And like you said, Ms. Hardy, it has been a difficult time for all of us, but we have had some great challenges, but we have met them all and we are grateful for that. And we, again, we thank you for your input.
Thank you.
All for you. Okay. Now we are moving on to, I'm sure that what teachers and other employees have been waiting for. We are very fortunate this year. Last year we gave the, I think we gave $500 last year.
Actually, I, I had forgotten all that too until Ms. Altman helped to remind me. And actually, her staff did, we gave $150 right before the pandemic started to everyone. And then we had specific kind of hazard pay situations for some of our staff that were teacher assistants, school nutrition, bus drivers, that happened a little bit later on in the spring. So 150 early and then, and then bonuses for people who are working in hazardous, hazardous conditions at that point, a little bit later on in the spring.
And we did, and we want to continue that this year. We are very fortunate that we are able to give more this year. So all full-time employees will receive $1,500. Yay, 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 yay. Provided that we approve it, I'm sure that we will. And once it's approved, all part-time employees will receive $1,000. And now I need to get a.
Can I just correct one thing?
Yes, you can.
Ms. Altman, we said June 30th yesterday, correct? June 30th is, so the agenda item says July 31st. It will be June 30th when they will be.
And you will be receiving it on June 30th, once again, after this wonderful board. Go ahead and approve it and then we are all set to go. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion that our employees, that the full-time employees will receive a $1,500 bonus and our part-time employees will receive a $1,000 bonus.
Second.
Now that, first and second, yeah, let's, you go with your question. I have one.
Just friendly inquiry, Dr. Doyle. Last time, the long-term subs were excluded. Can they be included this time?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Altman.
Come on, long-term.
So if they're in an interim capacity, serving as a long-term sub, then yes. If they are only intermittent like once every third week, then they would not.
Am I only answer clarification for people listening? Would you please explain where the funds are coming from?
Yes. Per the agenda item, they will be coming from our S R 2 funds. And just by way of making sure that folks understand, we've really tried to use our funds as efficiently and effectively as possible. as efficiently and effectively as possible. So although we're using some of the S R two funds, which are the second kind of round of funds that are coming, we still have S, CARES Act one, I don't, I don't know how it's really designated at this point, but the first round of funding that we received, and so things that we were going to designate in S R two, we will now switch back to funds that we had already received. So um, we have received a pretty significant chunk of dollars for that purpose. And for the um, listening public, this recognizes the extra time that every one of our employees has had to give in order to provide blended digital instruction, to deliver meals, to um, prepare things in ways that we never thought we would have to do, um, you know, eighteen months ago. So um, it just recognizes the hard work, the extra time and the care that our staff has provided to families and students.
Thank you. Are we ready for a question?
Wait a minute, I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So how will this impact people that are retiring?
That's a great question. So it says in this item that anyone who is employed as of today will receive a bonus. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if they're retiring, this is, but because this is a bonus, it doesn't factor into their retirement, so it won't affect when they get paid for their first check, that kind of thing. Thank you for the question.
But that's a good way to retire.
Yes.
And, and can you reiterate, how was the part-time, who's, how, how the um, subs, they're not getting anything, right?
No, if you were a long-term sub, you're serving in an interim capacity, then you would receive the part-time bonus of a thousand dollars. If you were just, if you just came like four days the entire school year, you would not be eligible.
What if they probably sub like twice a week? You don't count those either?
No.
For part-time?
Any more questions, discussion? Are we ready for the question? All those in favor of the employees getting uh, this bonus, let it be known by saying aye? Aye. Those opposed? I have it, motion carried. And once again, we would like to thank everybody. It has been a difficult year, uh, but uh, you all have stood up there, you have worked hard, and this is only a small token of the, to say that we appreciate all that you have done, all that for our children and for one another. So we appreciate that, and we hope that you would enjoy it over the summer. And right now, we're going to Page six. Oh. Going to close session?
Nope.
Thank you.
Banger.
Banger.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Law, you make. Yes, ma'am, this will be quick, and it's hard to come after uh, the bonuses, but I'll do my best. Uh, board members, you have before you, the uh, Banger awardees, I would ask that you um, review that, and then we'll submit it to consent agenda and vote out it on uh, Thursday. Um, not discussing it publicly because we want to make sure that all the awardees have been qualified. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll be, we'll be prepared for that, okay? Good. And now we're going to ask Dr. Doyle, she can conduct to evaluate the plus and delta.
As the board considers its mission, uh, what worked for you today in achieving the mission of the Board of Education in Craven County Schools?
There's a lot of great information.
I'm glad that the modern teacher framework was cleared up, and we know that it's a framework and not a program.
I guess implementing, um, or including the voice of, of everyone involved, such as the cabinet, tech, going on certain discussions.
Having the input from um, the principals during Avid, that was nice.
Very good.
Nice really isn't the word, beneficial.
Beneficial. Anything else? It could have been better if.
Probably should have watched time a little better, or allotted time a little better, because, you know, we're running, it, it was good, it was all meaningful, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, a timer, time management a little bit better, or a lot of time.
Anything else?
As in with the uh, timing, but some of the information, if you didn't have a timer, would be done.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Some of the information was redundant.
Oh, redundant information, okay. Anything else?
I want to go back to the plus of, yes, ma'am, to do it. The chairperson used her gavel in an effective manner. And I was proud and pleased.
I thought I was in church. Oh, God.
All right, anything else? All right, what worked, a lot of great information, glad that the modern teacher framework was cleared up, and we understand that it's a framework and not a program, including the voice of everyone involved, such as cabinet technology for discussions. Having the input from the principals during the Avid presentation was beneficial, chairperson using her gavel in an effective manner. Deltas, watch the time for allotting the time better and redundant information. That's all I have, chairman.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I need a motion to go to the closed session.
I, I don't, I got things coming on both ears, but the motion is that we go into closed session um, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, tradition of appointment of a public officer, employee, or respected public officer, or employee in accordance with N C T S one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, subject to page six, because of an attorney in order to protect attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, whose privilege is hereby acknowledged, according to N C T S one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, subject to page three, and he, and, and Mr. Duff has already seconded it.
It has been moved and seconded, it's in the closed session. All those in favor that be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, we are in, we are going to close this.